Yes, yeah. It's in practice session, so we are unable to we're unable to tell at this point because we're in practice session, not live.
We're not live on Zoom?
No, because if we go live on Zoom, they won't be able to hear us. A slide, that says we're having technical difficulties.
Yeah, we could do that.
David, would you like to proceed coming into chambers and yeah, well, and we can work on troubleshooting while they're in closed session? He's on his way back. Just heard the door.
Test. Testing one, two.
Good evening. Let's call it order the special council meeting closed session of December 5th, 2023 at 5:42 PM. City strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyville prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents. We're committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of the public of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. The city council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech to prevent our meetings from being disrupted. This protects the rights of other speakers and ensures council can accomplish its business in a reasonably efficient manner. Speaker comments must be limited to agenda items being considered by council. The presiding officer will make a determination as to whether a speaker's comment is related to the agenda item being considered by council. If a speaker does not comply, the presiding officer must rule will rule the speaker out of order. The presiding officer will not rule speech out of order because the presiding officer disagrees with the content of a speaker's speech. Before we get started, I'd like to remind participants of some procedural items for this meeting. During the meeting, remote participants will remain muted while speaking. If remote participants have a question or comment, please use the raised hand feature. Speakers will be called upon to speak one at a time. Members of public may participate in person, online, or by telephone to provide public comment. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk in person or use the raised hand feature online to request to speak. Location and online meeting details are available on the council agenda. Captions are available to viewers accessing this meeting via Zoom, possibly. Captions can be displayed using the Show Captions button. Following the closed session, the discussion of upcoming selection of vice mayor and discussion of the 2024 Council Intergovernmental Assignment Study session will begin at 6:00 PM, and regular council meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. We encourage the public to stay tuned and participate in the study session and regular meeting. First up, city clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dean. Councilmember Melton.
Present.
Councilmember Cisneros.
Present.
Councilmember Mellinger.
Present.
Councilmember Srinivasan.
Present.
Councilmember Sel.
Present.
Six present. Vice Mayor Dean is absent.
Thank you. Members of public will now have an opportunity to address council on the closed session items. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk, raise your. And we will not be taking remote speaker comments for this, so please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. I will call members of public participating in person. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards on this item. There are, because of technical difficulties, we will not be taking remote participant comments. I'll close the public comment. Council will now adjourn to the closed session.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Please, I'm assuming you're going to note that Vice Mayor Dean is excused, absent.
So yes, Vice Mayor Dean has an excused absence. Council will adjourn to closed session and be back here at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
This is a test. This is a test. This is an audio test.
Hi, David.
This is an audio. Can we please conduct one more audio test?
Testing. Testing one, two.
One more audio test, please.
Testing, David. Can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C.
The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved.
Great. A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C. The technical difficulty source has been confirmed and is resolved. Great. Testing. David, can you hear us? Testing. Should I recite the ABCs again? A, B, C.[225.99]
This city council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech to prevent our meetings from being disrupted. This protects the rights of other speakers and ensures that council can accomplish its business in a reasonably efficient manner. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by council. The presiding officer will make a determination as to whether speaker's comments is related to an agenda item being considered by council. If a speaker does not comply, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. The presiding officer will not rule speech out of order because the presiding officer disagrees with the content of a speaker's speech. Before we get started, I would like to remind participants of some procedural items for this meeting. During the meeting, remote participants were being muted when not speaking. If remote participants have a question or a comment, please use the raised hand feature. Speakers will be called upon to speak one at a time. Members of public may participate in person, online, or by telephone to provide public comments. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk in person or use the raised hand feature online to request to speak, star nine on your telephone. Location and online meeting details are available on the council agenda. Captions are available to viewers accessing this meeting via Zoom. Captions can be displayed using the show captions button. Following the study session, the regular council meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. We encourage the public to stay tuned and participate in the regular meeting. City Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Councilmember Melton.
Present.
Councilmember Cisneros.
Present.
Councilmember Mellinger.
Present.
Councilmembers Srini Vasan.
Present.
Councilmember Sell.
Present.
Six present, Vice Mayor Dean absent.
Thank you very much, and please note that Vice Mayor Dean's absence is an excused absence. We'll move on to our first item, item twenty-three dash zero-one-seven-three, selection of vice mayor, is our staff report.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council members. This is David Carnahan, the city clerk. Council policy seven dot three dot one zero, vice mayor selection, provides for tonight's study session where council members may express interest in serving as the vice mayor for 2024. Council will select the 2024 vice mayor on Tuesday, January ninth, 2024. This concludes the staff report.
Thank you, and I'll bring it to council. First up is councilmember Srini Vasan.
Thank you, mayor. I am expressing my interest to serve as vice mayor of Sunnyvale. As the vice mayor, I will be a resource for the mayor, share responsibility, and make mayor's job easier and successful. I will work to make Sunnyvale a safe and diverse and harmonious city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is councilmember Melton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Klein. I would like to express my interest to my colleagues to serve as vice mayor in 2024. May I say a few words for some self-advocacy? The first thing I'd like to say is thank you to our current vice mayor, Omar Dean, who has done a fantastic job in that role. Before vice mayor Dean, councilmember Cisneros served as 2022's vice mayor. And in my seven years on Sunnyvale City Council, just going back in time, in 2021, Glenn Hendricks, in 2020, Nancy Smith. I had the fortune of serving as vice mayor in 2019. Our mayor today, Larry Klein, served as our vice mayor in 2018. And then, in my first year on council, 2017, Gustav Larson served as vice mayor, and that in fact was his second turn in a row as vice mayor. He also served in 2016. I appreciate all of those individuals. And I wanted to mention that in Sunnyvale, we typically take in our selection of vice mayor, one of two tracks. I'll refer to them as track one and track two. So, track one, which we've done a couple of times since I've been on council, is we say, let's go with the most senior council member who's not the mayor and roll with that individual for the year. Track two, which is also a perfectly valid track, which I respect, is, you know, who is sort of next in line, who hasn't been vice mayor already? And I really respect councilmember Srini Vasan for raising his hand. I'm of a mind that when council makes a decision in January about track one versus track two, I would put forth the argument that 2024 is a year where we go with track one, where we go with a senior council member to serve as vice mayor. There are in fact seven or eight specific duties of the vice mayor. I would make a case that I'm ready and qualified for each of these. Let me just read them off quickly. The vice mayor attends the Downtown Business Association Board meetings monthly, can do. The vice mayor attends the quarterly Moffett Field Agency meetings and interested party meetings. I feel like I can do that. Performs the duties of mayor if the mayor is absent or disabled. Chairs council meetings at the request of the mayor. Represents the city at ceremonial functions at the request of the mayor. Reports closed session actions at the public council meetings. And finally initiates routine motion for consent calendar items on the city council agenda. I feel all of those items for me, colleagues, are can do, but the way I look at it, having served as vice mayor previously, the number one job of vice mayor is to make the mayor look good and to be the mayor's wing person. And in doing so, the entire council, the entire public hearing, the entire city looks good. So that's my commitment, colleagues, if you choose me to serve as vice mayor for 2024, is in service to the city council and in service to the city. And thank you for letting me advocate for a few moments. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments of interest? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk or use the raised hand feature now, or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have two minutes to speak. I have no in-person speaker card. City clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
No, mayor.
Thank you. I will close public comment. And seeing no other comments from council, we'll move on to our next item. Our next item is item twenty-three dash zero-one-seven-four, discuss the 2024 council intergovernmental Every year, council reviews three types of appointments. Appointments made by council, appointments made by the mayor, and appointments made by the outside agencies. This study session is an opportunity for council to express their interest in retaining current appointments and seek appointments to those assignments which match their interests. In the study session packet, current council pointees who expressed an interest in retaining an existing appointment remain listed under the current assignment. Appointments that are released by the current council pointees are left vacant, or left vacant by an outgoing council member are listed as available. Appointments offered by the current council pointee but will retain if no interest are listed as offer. First, and before we get to appointments, I just want to bring up just one topic. So just from a comment standpoint, you know, I look at these appointments as very important from representing what our city is. And so, as we're going through this and talking about your interest in the different commissions and boards that we're talking, that we're looking at here, if you want to be, let's try that again. Someone's, there we go. Okay. So, you know, from that standpoint, if you're wanting to be primary, please take this position seriously, you know, if you're going to be attending the majority of those meetings. That's why, you know, the alternate is there for your basically backup if you can't make it to meetings. And, you know, I think that is very important from how this body represents, you know, it's not a title, you know, title filler from a resume standpoint, but it's, you know, representing the city and making sure that you, you know, can attend these meetings preferably or hopefully. And, you know, as we're going through that, if you have things that you've changed your mind on, so as we're going through the different positions and different areas, if you've changed your mind and want to make things available, please mark that so. You know, we're just taking interest and kind of dropping at this point. We will be making that final decision come January. So, first, and actually, before we get to council comments, I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Use the raised hand feature now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have one minute to speak. I have no speaker cards in person. City clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
No, mayor.
Okay, I will close public comment, and we'll start going through section by section. First, for section one, appointments made by council. Let's make sure I have this right. Under a community member appointments, former councilmember Gustav Larson will continue serving on the BOSTA Board of Directors and SF Bay Area Regional System Financing Authority until his resignation on January eighteenth, 2024. Any appointment of a council member to these assignments will be for the remainder of that term, which expires in June, on June thirtieth, 2027. And does any council member have interest in this assignment? First up is councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I feel like I have learned a great deal under former councilmember Larson as his unofficial understudy, and I am very interested in stepping forward for the BOSTA Board next year.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments? Any other interest? Seeing none. Next, we move to board and commission liaison assignments. Now, per council policy, these assignments are set on a biannual rotation. Council members are listed in the district order with the mayor listed first, and boards and commissions listed in alpha. Yes?
There is another assignment for Gustav Larson, San Francisco, the regional financial authority.
Can you use your mic?
Yeah. There is another assignment of Gustav Larson.
Thank you. Okay. So let me pull that up just to make sure. It's there too, that's right. No, sorry. I'm, that's right. That's right. So it's councilmember Mellinger who's interested in both of those assignments, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So moving on, we'll talk about boards and commissions for a moment. And one of the things that was listed in the staff report, which as far as kind of continuation, I did want to bring up that there were some, let's say, mistakes as far as that's concerned. And I wanted council to talk a little bit about the Human Relations Commission. So when we created that commission back in April, I think, we basically at that point said that the mayor was the liaison for that commission. So up until this time, we had seven commissions, and we had kind of the rotating description that I talked about is, you know, per, every commission had a council member, and then it kind of moved from one commission to the other every six months. We added the Human Relations Commission, which added a kind of a, let's say, additional item. And so I would be, I'd be interested to hear, you know, and I've missed one meeting this year that I actually asked, that I picked another council member to attend in my stead because I had a conflict. But I'd be interested to see if we consider that as a second commission that needs to be rotated through all seven council members. So talking about the Human Relations Commission, and then our core, what I'll say is our core seven, to continue in the, in the, kind of the way that it's always considered is every six months you switch to another commission. So we have kind of the original seven, and then we have our new one, and I'd be interested to say, do you prefer, does council prefer that that be an appointee or be the mayor unless the mayor can't attend, or whether or not that should be a commission that every council member every six months gets, what I'll say is the standard, one of the standard seven, and then also an appointment to the Human Relations Commission? So I'd be interested to hear those comments. First up is councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for the question to answer. I like that. And so I do have thoughts on the placement there, but I'll answer that one first. And I think that it would be best if this was rotating along with the other ones, and I'll explain why. That commission is unique in the subject matter and in just the breadth of conversation. I think it would serve council well for everyone, hopefully, to get an opportunity to sit in on those discussions, get to know those commissioners, because this is something that the city is just venturing into. So to familiarize ourselves with the work plan and the content of that and what's going on there, I think it'd be great. And you've done a great job lead shepherding them through that initial work, but looking forward to having everyone get an opportunity to spend time with them because it's really interesting stuff. And then for my further comment is I have the Heritage Preservation Commission in the latter part of the year, and that is on a Wednesday, and I'm unable to attend consistently on Wednesdays. So I was actually going to put my colleague, councilmember Melton, on the spot a little bit and ask if he, can we ask if there'd be willingness to trade or how should that work?
So, one second, I'd prefer, hopefully staff can help out.
Yeah, because I don't want to do something.
Because the way this was listed was a little confusing. So if we decided to make the Human Relations Commission a, let's say, a separate commission that we're just cycling through all council members on, where, so what are the, I'll call standard seven, the order of the standard seven? So the problem is that the document that we have duplicated the mayor as far as that, and human relations is in the middle of all that. So, you know, trying to, trying to kind of deal with, basically trying to clarify that and trying to, let's say, fix it quickly so that council members know that what they're conceivably signing up for. Would it be to remove the Human Relations Commission from that list and then, I'll say, collapse the council members on to figure out who was appointed to that, you know, based upon the standard quote-unquote mayor and district ordering? So before councilmember Cisneros says, oh, I can't make that meeting, I just want to clarify what, if you remove the Human Relations Commission, what the appointees would be?
I see.
Do you understand my question?
I do understand that. That's very smart, yeah.
So, so Mayor Michel Zory, Senior Management Analyst, the way the staff packet is written now is according to council policy, so that's listed in Board and Commission Order by Alpha, which is why the Human Relations Commission is in that. And then it lists the mayor first and the board, and then the council rotation by district order. So because of the eight commissions, that's why the mayor's name repeats twice. But it's currently an Alpha order as far as Boarding Commissions is listed. So that's the way it was presented in the packet, so.
I appreciate that. So my question is, do we need to change policy? We can override policy this one time and then correct it later, I'm assuming, but ultimately, you know, and as councilmember Cisneros was saying, if we look at the Human Relations Commission as kind of a new and kind of a very unique position or liaison position at this point, you know, would, if we remove that, then it would be, and just kind of going through art to sustainability, leaving out human relations, it would be Klein, Sell, Cisneros, Srini Vasan on heritage, and Melton on housing and human services, and then we would do Mellinger on parks and rec, and Dean on sustainability. And then as kind of postulated, Sell would be the first, if we kind of did a similar order for human relations, Sell would be the first council member to be a liaison to that position. Does that make sense to everyone in the room?
So, Mayor, the policy would need to be agendized if you wanted to make permanent changes to the Boarding Commission policy, but this is an opportunity to kind of shuffle things around. They would be ratified on January ninth, and then that would be, just take place in this time period, and we'd come back annually and ask again. So a permanent change would require changes to the policy. Otherwise, this is an opportunity to change and, you know, talk about different representation. So it really depends on council's preference on whether a permanent change for that commission or just a rotation change for the next year.
Okay. So, and I was just trying to clarify because, you know, looking at the first six months and the second six months, you know, it shows me that I'm on the Art Commission both times, which, so I'm trying to, just try to clarify everything at the start here and make things a little bit clearer. So as we're, and from my standpoint, you know, I think it makes sense to just remove the Human Relations Commission from this and see it as a separate policy. And then, as I was saying before, so just if it was quote-unquote standard, it would be the Art Commission Klein, BPAC, Sell, Board and Library Commission, Cisneros, Heritage, Srini Vasan, Housing Human Services, Melton, Parks and Rec, Mellinger, and Sustainability, Dean. And then for the second six months, would it be Sell as Art Commission? Is that the normal translation? Or would it be Dean as Art Commission?
Correct.
So it'd be Dean as Art Commission, Klein as BPAC, Sell as Board of Library Trustees, Cisneros for Heritage, Srini Vasan for Housing and Human Services, Mellinger for Parks and Rec?
No, I would be Parks and Rec this cycle and Sustainability next.
Sustainable, oh yeah, sorry, human relations, got it. So Melton for Parks and Rec and Mellinger for Sustainability, got it. Okay. So I think, I think everyone is clear on that. Is that, does that make sense to staff?
So, Mayor, just clarifying question. So for the Human Relations Commission, who would be the designated council member, or is that still for discussion?
For the second six months, it would be Cisneros. So I'm looking at it as basically a similar rotation, except it goes through based upon mayor and districts, but it's a single, it's a single commission.
Mr. Mayor, may I cut in for a moment?
Let the city manager comment first.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. So if we, if we took the Human Relations Commission out of the rotation and said, it's still going to rotate among all seven council members, just in a different order. So if you had the Human Relations Commission, you would be the lucky council member to have two.
Correct. That's what, much like the mayor, and I think that's what we're saying in general.
Yeah.
Is, as opposed to, because it becomes a little confusing as far as rotation. So seven council members, seven, I'll say, historic commissions that we had, and the new one is a rotation amongst seven, but it's an additional duty that every council member has.
We all share that weight, right?
Correct.
Everyone takes a turn doing two.
Correct.
So we could, we could bring that back as a policy update that the council could consider, but again, tonight, if you wanted to, if you wanted to do that for the purposes of tonight, leave the mayor in and we'll bring that policy back. You can certainly make any changes you want tonight. And again, addressing councilmember Cisneros, conflict is also something you should try and work out tonight.
Absolutely. So now that we're, now that we're, I think, on the same page, if people have questions, councilmember Cisneros, can you clarify what you can't, what commission you can't attend?
I am unavailable on Wednesdays on a consistent basis at that time, and everything else looks really good. So, and that's just for the, you know, that would be for the latter half of the year. So however, that ends up slotting in according to my colleagues' availability, and I'd be happy to serve on the.
And is that all Wednesdays or just the first Wednesday?
All Wednesdays.
Okay. So you couldn't do Art Commission?
Or Art Commission, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Or Art Commission or Housing Human Services, yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mellinger.
I just want to come back to this question about the Human Relations Commission real quick.
Thank you.
I just want to sort of make sure that we're all clear because there is a question I have on my mind, which was, what if we were to add another commission? And I think there is a solution here that scales nicely, which is if we look at what we had for the traditional seven, let's say, what we have essentially is a wheel with seven slots going around seven council members. What we are doing with the Human Relations Commission is we are setting up a second wheel that is also going among the seven council members, and every semester, one lucky council member will get two appointments. And if we add another commission, it goes onto the second wheel, and then we have two council members who have two appointments per semester. So that clarifies the only, the other alternative would be to take the second mayor, the mayor's second slot and make that a free slot that council members could fight for, but I feel like the two wheels approach is going to be clean.
Correct.
And with that, I am fine serving on Parks and Rec next semester and Sustainability the semester after that, if I am understanding this correctly.
Correct. I think you are, you are reading it correctly, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just toss out a different concept altogether. I've been at this for a while, and one thing I find myself lamenting, a small lament, every six months, is you spend six months getting to know the commissioners and the important work that they're doing and the work plan, and it's time to shift over to another commission. I actually had something, Mayor Klein, you may remember, it must have been like 2018 or so. I spent a full year with the BPAC. So you and I did a switch to arrange Russ with the BPAC for 12 months, so you can really get in deep and understand the work plan and the commissioners. So I don't know if this idea will have any traction at all with my colleagues or fit within the one-wheel or two-wheel approach, but I would nominate myself, if staff can work it out and it has the support of my colleagues, I would not mind spending 12 months in 2024 with the BPAC. So I'll just put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, I forgot to lower my hand, sorry.
Councilmember Mellinger.
I'm just going to say that I don't have a whole lot of appetite for changing up the rotations. I think that six months per makes a lot of sense. We have three new council members on board. You know, obviously, it's, it is a little sad to say goodbye when, after your six months, but I think it's important for the three of us to get as broad a sampling of the boards and commissions as quickly as we can, and at six months per, we will be just about done with our first terms by the time we've done that. And so I think I am fine with keeping this on the regular six-month rotation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add to that, I do think it's valuable for all our commissioners to get exposed to, or all of our council members get to expose to the different commissions, what their vision, what their work is, and ultimately, you know, build those relationships and get a kind of a preview on what's happening here, not to, not to put that weight on a single council member's shoulders for a specific year, but I think it, there's a lot of value in how that continues to rotate through the different commissions for the different council members. I see no other comments on this. Next are, does council have any changes they would like to make to council subcommittees and standing committees? Let me see. And just, and ultimately, this is just talking about interest on what you're, what, you know, you have several offers here, and whether or not anyone wants to change up or offer that up. Councilmember Cisneros.
Yes. I would like to jump over from the Community Event and Neighborhood Distribution Subcommittee to the Council Subcommittee on Boards and Commissions. That is my preference and interest.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments? Okay. Next, does council have any changes they would like to make to Section D, external IGR There are multiple offers here and availables. First up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I am interested in the South Bay Salt Ponds Restoration Stakeholder Forum and the Water Emergency Transportation Authority Community Advisory Committee. I am offering my role as Valley Water Commission Alternate. I have a new job that requires me to be in office much of the week, and noon to two meetings are very difficult to square with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Yeah.
Mike?
Oh, sorry. I am interested in A-BAG, General Assembly. And then, yeah, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, I'll just say really quickly, in light of Councilmember Mellinger's conflict with Valley Water, I'm hap, I would then like to just make it easy, and I'll retain that one, or that would be a preference to do, just to, so that, you know, there's somebody who's still there, but I, you know, if somebody wants to take on the Valley Water, did I hear that right? If somebody else wants to take on the Valley Water, jumping in as alternate, happy to help onboard someone onto that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cell.
I have an interest in the Santa Clara Expressway Alternate.
Thank you. Any other comments for this section? And you still have time to give feedback. I know we don't have the Vice Mayor here, but if you, if you, after this meeting you have interest, please, you know, give that, give that feedback to staff, and they will, you know, incorporate that into the January meeting. Next are appointments made by the mayor.
Actually, I had one other I was looking at.
Thank you, Councilmember Mellinger.
I was looking at the SR-85 PAB, since Mayor Klein has offered that and Vice, that Councilmember Srini Vasan is alternate. I'm assuming that, well, I'd like to ask through the mayor if Councilmember Srini Vasan is looking to move up onto that, onto primary for the PAB.
Yes, I can do that. I don't think we have met.
So, yeah, so there, part of the questions to council, or questions to staff.
It's the regular.
Yeah.
Said that it was meets on a quarterly basis. It did not meet at all this year.
Yeah.
So, so whether or not there's.
Alternator.
Alternator, so definitely it's been an ongoing question to get that, that, you know, that committee or that commission back up and going. But right now, they haven't been meeting, but I'm happy to give up that position if.
I would be willing to serve as alternate if Councilmember Srini Vasan wanted to move up to primary, but if they're not meeting, I, it may be a moot point.
It's a moot point, in my opinion, but for the record, I can be the primary there.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Mellinger. Any other comments in this section? That was for, yes, internals. Section D, or external, IGRs. Wait. We were in, we moved. One second. Too many files open. Yeah, does, so council have any changes to external, Section D, external IGR appointments? No. Councilmember Mellinger?
Wait, I think I'm on the wrong thing. Hold on.
No, I think. Yes, I know.
Wait, is it, are we on 2A or 1D?
1D.
We're still on 1D, never mind, I'm sorry.
Yes. No, no more question, no more comments on external IGR appointments. We'll now move on to appointments made by mayor. Any interest in any of the external IGR appointments? First up, Councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, I'd be interested in the Cities Association Legislative Action Committee Primary.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes, I would be interested in local, Caltrain Local Policymaker Group Primary. I was also curious when the LAC alternate, when the LAC meets for the Cities Association.
So the, the LAC meets approximately six to eight meetings a year, usually at 6:00 PM, six to 7:00 PM before the, the 7:00 PM Cities Association Committee, Commission.
What day of the week is that generally?
Thursday, Thursday evenings.
Um, I'll think about that. Thank you.
Any other, any other interest in mayor appointees for Section Two, appointments made by mayor?
A question for my colleagues. Would anyone be interested in the LPMG alternate position?
I see no comments.
Councilmember Cell has been engaged in transportation, perhaps?
So, Councilmember Cell?
So I'd be interested in the alternate position if Councilmember Mellinger is moving up to the primary. Is that, okay.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Mellinger, anything else?
That does it for me, thanks.
Councilmember Cell?
That's it.
And I'll be, you know, making, so just as a reminder, as far as mayor appointments, I'll make my appointments following the January ninth meeting. I'll, you know, so definitely show your interest before, before that meeting and, or at that meeting. And then often I will try to, let's say, level the, the number of appointees for different, for different appointments and different responsibilities with, of course, the council member, you know, with the council members' acquisition that that's one that they want to do. For number three, appointments made by outside agencies, does council have any changes to assignments in this section? And all outside agency appointments must be, of course, ratified by council before the respected appointees are officially approved to serve on those assignments. Councilmember Mellinger?
Mr. Mayor, when does the Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission meet?
It meets every other month, I think. I can't, does staff have that information handy? One second, and I, I'll tell you.
Mayor, I have on here, meets bi-monthly on the fourth Wednesday of every second month at 5:30?
Yes, that sounds correct. So, yeah, so every other month.
Mr. Mayor, I would defer to you if you wanted to keep that seat, but I might actually be interested in that one.
So recycling and waste right now? I was just appointed chair at our last meeting.
Never mind then.
But if you're interested in alternate, I'm happy that, that you're there for an alternate, from an alternate standpoint, but yes, I just.
I did not realize that. I would be.
It's one of the, it's one of the many things that slipped through the cracks when we didn't get to non-agenda items and comments, or IGR comments for the last two meetings.
Well, I'm not sure if that would be an official or an unofficial alternate position, but I would be interested.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I think that is all the feedback that staff needs. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So with that.
Mayor Klein, can I?
Sure.
Just jump in. I guess I got a little disoriented.
Sure.
Whether we were on Section Two or Section Three. I want to just talk to Section Three.
Sure.
For a sec, for, for a second. I, I'm not proposing any changes, as a matter of fact. I deeply appreciate the ability to serve the residents of Sunnyvale and Santa Clara County on the Airport Land Use Commission, on Santa Clara LAFCO, where I serve as board chairperson, and also on the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority, SVRIA, where I also serve as board chairperson. And I just wanted to mention that for me, all of these appointments, and I, I don't know how this actually came to be, but the reality is that all of these appointments come via the Cities Association City Selection Committee. And I, I deeply, deeply appreciate the CSC for having the confidence in me to provide me with these three appointments. And Mayor Klein, I don't want to put you on the spot or anything, but you're very influential with the Cities Association. And so anything that you've ever done to help me get those appointments along the way, I just wanted to acknowledge that and express my gratitude to you personally, Mayor Klein, for that. And it looks like I'm going to be back to the CSC in May 2024 for LAFCO and ALUC, if I'm reading this chart right. So I appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to give everyone the heads up, there will be a selection committee coming up in January. So the Cities Association of Santa Clara County will be putting out a call for interest for multiple positions coming up in January, but that will, I don't, I, off the top of my head, I don't know what those positions are, but watch your emails. Are there any other questions or comments on our study session item? Seeing none, we will adjourn the study session meeting at 6:57 PM. Thank you. Seeing none, we will adjourn the study session meeting at 6:57 PM. Thank you. Good evening. Let's call to order the council meeting of December 5th, 2023, at 7:05 PM. The city strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents. We are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. The city council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech to prevent our meetings from being disrupted. This protects the rights of other speakers and ensures that council can accomplish its business in a reasonably efficient manner. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the council for consent calendar items or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the city council authority to address, generally referred to as within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. The presiding officer will make a determination as to whether a speaker's comments are related to an agenda item being considered by the council or to a matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council during oral communications. If a speaker does not comply, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. The presiding officer will not rule speech out of order because the presiding officer disagrees with the content of a speaker's speech. Before we get started, I'd like to remind participants of some procedural items for this meeting. During the meeting, remote participants will remain muted when not speaking. If remote participants have a question or comment, please use the raised hand feature. Speakers will be called upon to speak one at a time. A random order voice vote will be administered by the city clerk for each vote. Members of public may participate in person, online, or by telephone to provide public comments. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk in person, or use the raised hand feature online to request to speak, star nine on your telephone. Location and online meeting details are available on the council agenda. Captions are available to viewers accessing this meeting via Zoom. Captions can be displayed using the Show Captions button. Comments on matters not on the agenda or related to the presentation agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close a public hearing on that agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes, and time limits will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the council meeting agenda. First up, please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call. City clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Councilmember Melton.
Present.
Councilmember Sisneros.
Present.
Councilmember Mellinger.
Present.
Councilmember Srinivasan.
Present.
Councilmember Sell.
Present.
Six present, vice mayor Dean absent.
Thank you, and please note for the record that that is an excused absence. Next is our closed session report. Council met in closed session this afternoon on one item, conference with labor negotiators, a gen- agency designated representative city council salary subcommittee on the city manager compensation. There is nothing to report. Next is oral communications. Members of public will now have an opportunity to address council on topics not listed on tonight's agenda, and this pre- and this section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after the general business section of the agenda. Individuals are limited to a single appearance. A reminder to the public, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on your telephone if you wish to address council. I will call on members of public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. As stated at the beginning of this meeting, this council meeting is considered a limited public forum, and the council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the city council's authority to address, generally referred to as within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. As a reminder, this is a safe space for all speakers. There should be no clapping, no booing, and we, and we want everyone to be respectful of whoever is speaking. Whether you agree or disagree with what they are saying, they have a right to speak without disruption. If a speaker does not speak to the matter within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order to allow the city council to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and to protect the rights of other speakers. The presiding officer will not rule speech out of order because the presiding officer disagrees with the content of the speaker's speech. Before I get to the public, council member Sell has an announcement.
Sunnyvale minimum wage increases in January, on January 1st, 2024, effective Monday, January 1st, 2024, the new minimum wage rate in Sunnyvale will be 18.55 per hour. For additional information and wage posters, visit sunnyvale.ca.gov and search minimum wage, or contact the city staff at 408-730-7902, or minimumwage@sunnyvale.ca.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I have several speaker cards. First up is Ori S., followed by Oded S.
Hi. Good evening. I try to be short. My name is Ori. I'm at Sunnyvale for about 10 years. My family, we live in District Four, represented by council member Ross Melton. This is my first time in the council, and it was important to me to come and say thank you, Russ, for your dedication and work presenting District Four. In the last few weeks, my wife and other neighbors reached out to discuss concerns about the safety of the Jewish community in the city, and you were very attentive. Met with everyone, reached out, listened and learned, and addressed, addressed it in last council meeting. I appreciate your pragmatic approach, focusing on the city of Sunnyvale and its residents. Thank you, Russ. I know that a community member from other districts reached out to the mayor and other council members, and I would like to thank everyone in the city council that took our concerns seriously and made us feel included. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is Oded S., followed by Yaron S.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Klein, and honorable Sunnyvale city council members. My name is Oded, and I live in Sunnyvale with my wife and four kids for almost 10 years now. During the last few months, the Jewish community in Sunnyvale, as well as many places worldwide, is going through unprecedented number and in intensity of anti-Semitic organized events. Specifically for our region, I have friends who have been in Valley Fair Mall during the pro-Palestinian demonstration and were sincerely afraid of their life and well-being. Many of them sent letters to the mall management, asking for better protection policies and avoiding this mall for now. As a result of all of this during the last two weeks, myself, as well as Jenny, Tali, Alon, Ilana, Jason, Iran, and few other members of the Sunnyvale Jewish community, met most of you, and will be happy to continue meeting everyone from the Sunnyvale City Council. I want to share our deepest appreciation for you taking the time to meet us, listen to our concerns, and work together to ensure Sunnyvale stays a safe place to live. So thank you. Thank you for your time and for everything you are doing for us and for all the residents of this great city we live in.
Thank you. Next is Yaron S.
Dear city council members, my name is Yaron Chukel. I'm a Jewish 16-year-old, and I've lived in the USA my entire life. I've lived my entire le- the majority of my life, I've lived in Sunnyvale, and for the most part, I've really enjoyed it. I enjoy the community, the diversity in the place itself. Recently, I felt unsafe. Since the conflict in Israel that started on October 7th, my experience has changed. Just to list a few examples, I am a student at Fremont High School, and I have seen multiple swastikas spray painted on the bathroom walls and have experienced hateful speech comments about my culture. Another example is of my friend who attends Wilcox High School, and he has faced multiple threats to be beaten up just due to his Jewish heritage. Last summer, I went to a Jewish summer camp where I received a hoodie with Hebrew writing on it, and I've been scared and ambivalent to wear it in public and at my school and throughout the city. I hope and expect that the police forces will make me and other students and people feel safe in our own city. Thank you very much for your time, and I have a lot of respect for the work you do for us.
Mayor Klein, can I jump in with a comment for our public speaker? Thank you for your candor and for sharing especially what you said about the hoodie with Hebrew writing on it. I have a 16-year-old girl at Fremont High School and a 15-year-old boy at Fremont High School, and I'm hearing some of the things, same things you mentioned. Along the way, my daughter got a shirt from a friend that has a picture on the front and some Hebrew writing on the back, and I'm here to tell you, if she came to me tomorrow morning and said, "I want to wear this shirt today," I would be kind of uncomfortable letting her do that at Fremont High School or Valley Fair. So I'm just trying to say, I feel like I understand where you're coming from when you say that, and thank you for your courage in speaking today.
I really, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next I have two speakers who are coming up together, Guy L. and Shabbath S. And if you can give them six minutes, city clerk. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shafat Sayed. I've been a resident in Sunnyvale for over 30 years, and I'm a Muslim American.
My name is Guy Lubovic, and I'm Jewish and Sunnyvale resident for seven years. Our family care about each other and our community. Sunnyvale is a wonderful city that exemplifies diversity and cultural religion. It's been a very safe city. However, now that some Sunnyvale and Jewish and Muslim residents are living in fear for their safety. Since October 7th, there's been dramatic increase in antisemitism and Islamophobia. There's been multiple incidents of people getting targeted merely for expressing their faith and culture. While both Muslim and Jewish communities face their fears, there is a shared opportunity to understand and empathize with the concern of the others, fostering mutual awareness and compassion. We feel that cities, government, agency, and religious leaders need to loudly communicate their position and action to reduce antisemitism and Islamophobia. We request the city to adopt the unity and peace covenant we created and provide to the city council. We also request the city to take action on this covenant to reduce antisemitism and Islamophobia. Congressman Rowe has supported this covenant and issued a certificate for us. Supporting this covenant will help address people's fears, bring the community together, and set an example to our cities to follow.
Now I shall read the covenant. It's called the Unity and Peace Covenant. In recognition of the pressing need for solidarity in the face of growing global challenges, we, the undersigned, affirm our commitment to fostering an environment of safety, freedom, and peace for all individuals within our diverse communities. In light of the rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia, including recent violent hate crimes, we stand united in addressing these issues with a shared sense of responsibility. Number one, safety and security. We unequivocally declare that the safety and security of every individual within our communities are paramount. No one should live in fear due to their religious beliefs or cultural identity. We stand against all forms of hate and uphold a zero tolerance policy for antisemitism and Islamophobia. We pledge to work collaboratively with schools, law enforcement agencies, and community organizations to ensure that the protection of all members irrespective of their background. Together, we strive to create an atmosphere in which every person feels safe without apprehension or threat. Number two, freedom of religion and expression. We champion the principles of freedom of religion and expression as fundamental human rights that enrich the fabric of America. In the face of rising concerns about attacks on these liberties, we commit to upholding and promoting the right of every individual to practice their faith openly and express their religious beliefs without fear of persecution or discrimination. We support peaceful expressions of political opinion that do not promote hate or violence. Our communities will be spaces where diversity of thought and spirituality are embraced, contributing to a tapestry of understanding and acceptance. Number three, unity for peace. Understanding that unity is the bedrock of lasting peace, we pledge to foster an environment where our differences are not just tolerated, but celebrated. By building bridges of understanding between religious and cultural communities, we aim to dismantle the walls of mistrust and prejudice. As leaders, we will engage in dialogue and collaboration, promoting a culture of mutual respect and appreciation. Together, we will strive for a harmonious coexistence that transcends religious and political boundaries, creating a legacy of peace for generations to come. By signing this unity and peace covenant, we commit to being beacons of hope and agents of positive change. Let our collective voice echo the values of safety, freedom, and unity, inspiring others to join us on this transformative journey towards a world where diversity is celebrated and peace prevails. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to thank the two of you for, for stepping up within the community and showing ultimately that unity of neighbors. And, you know, definitely, as we hear from many residents who have concerns about safety and questions about, you know, as, as the previous speaker, showing, showing their faith publicly, you know, thank you for, for being those beacons within our community and, and setting the example of how we move forward from a very contentious time. So thank you for being here, and, you know, I look forward to working more with you. And I just want to thank council member Sell for, for encouraging you to come to this meeting and, and, you know, meeting and ultimately, to me, from my standpoint, making, making your call known as far as how Sunnyvale, how Sunnyvale can, can be better itself. So thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Sell. One moment, Guy and Shafat. We have a few more comments. Council member Sell.
I just was wondering if you could just elaborate, like, how you know each other and how you came about doing this statement?
Yeah, so what triggered this was the fact that, as we said, since October 7th, there is a lot of fear that is not always shown, even though the environment may be safe, just then things in the social media has created a lot of fear. I know, for example, it was discussed already, but we need, we moved the mezuzah inside the house, and we removed any Jewish symbol, just because we didn't want to be targeted by anyone, and it got worse and worse and worse because of the situation. And we've spoken, I've spoken to Shafat, and he was not aware of the fact, and that's the problem, I think. One of the challenges is that each one of us only see one side, so.
Yeah, Guy and I, we're neighbors. Our families are very close. Both of our daughters go to Homestead High, and we're like one family, so we talk a lot. And when Guy told me of this fear within the Jewish community, I, I was really not aware of it, and I wanted to better understand it. And we started having a lot of dialogue, and we said, you know, what we really need is people to come together as opposed to being driven apart. And we said, okay, what are we going to do about it? And we said, let's, let's create this positive statement, but we don't want to just make a statement. We're hoping, and the reason we're here is, we'd love for the city of Sunnyvale to support this, and we have some specific ideas on how to actually implement policies to help bring communities together. And we're hoping that the city of Sunnyvale can be, set an example for cities across America.
Yeah, I just want to, and the thing is, a lot of young people and old people are hearing a lot more hate speech online, and it would be really good to, to see leaders like yourself speak up and say that this is wrong, and, you know, we want to promote peace and want to promote, want to discourage this type of- this type of.
Thank you. And one second, Counselormember Shree Nivasan.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. I echo what Mayor said. Thank you very much for the statement you made and public speaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last speaker card. City Clerk, do we have any remote speakers wishing to speak under oral communications?
Yes, Mayor. First up, we have William Cooper, followed by Richard. William, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Great, thank you. Am I coming in all right? Can you guys hear me?
You're a little muffled, but we can hear you.
Here, I'm sorry. Is this any better?
That's better.
Okay, great. All right, so the main thing I wanted to talk about tonight is, you know, the country is changing and things aren't really looking that good for a lot of people in the country. So I'm a, I'm a man of European descent, and I just want to let others like me know that if you're worried about the, the way things are going, there's a group of people, there's many groups of people online that are fighting for you and your children's future. You can go to.
So is this under the?
Hey, fuck you, kitebag. I was talking to your mother. You made a loving bitch.
So, you know, especially with the, with the tone of language, the speaker's out of order and is not commenting on agenda items or within the jurisdiction matter of the city. So this is, this is the first warning? Are you still on the line?
It looks like their, their hand is down. The next speaker, look, their hand is back up, so we'll unmute them.
Mayor Klein, can I rise with a point of order for the city attorney?
I didn't finish, if you don't mind.
Mr. City Clerk, please, can I have an opportunity to, if I, if I may, through the mayor, address the city clerk? Is the city council required, in your opinion, city clerk, to give this individual another shot with the live microphone? I'd like to hear your thoughts.
What is your problem? I had the live mic, I had three minutes. Let me.
City Attorney, can you?
Our council policy talks about disruption and it says there will be a warning and then another opportunity. And then if the person violates the policy again, then they're ruled out of order. And normally it would not be muted, but in this case, it would be muted rather than possibly being removed from the, the chambers.
Okay, I, I understand. So I'll, just, I will implore the mayor. We, we heard one more second of the speaker, right? So that, to me, was the second chance. Or if you're going to give this individual a second chance, it's one second in duration. And if the city clerk can keep his finger on the mute button, that would be the second chance in the Sunnyvale way. Thank you for considering my opinion, Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, so I'll be unmuting William C. to give them their second chance, and then Richard will be up next. William, you've been unmuted.
I would like to say, I was just trying to talk and then you guys started interrupting me. So I don't really understand. I'll get to my point. That I was trying to make was just that for the other people in the community that feel like things like this that happen where they get trampled on by people that are elected officials that don't really look after their values, go to GoMTV.com, go to WatchEuropa.com, go to WatchTheFine.com, and find people like the Blood Tribe, White Lives Matter.
Mayor Klein, I rise with a point of order. Mayor Klein.
This is without, not within the jurisdiction matter of the city. And at this point, we'll move on to our next speaker.
Next up is Richard, followed by Judy S. Richard, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to ask the city to pass a resolution or come up with a public statement condemning the terrorist attacks of the Israeli government against the Palestinian people. As you may have known, other cities around the country have passed resolutions either standing with Israel or standing with the Palestinians' right to exist. The Israeli military is targeting children, hospitals, churches, mosques, and other off-limits targets. They've been caught using white phosphorus, which is banned by the Geneva Convention. Footage exists of Jewish soldiers shooting children in the genitals for sport, poisoning drinking water, and other horrendous acts of violence. Have any of you ever heard of the Talmud? For those that don't know, it's one of the books that the Judaic faith uses to guide them. It can be found in every synagogue across America in the world. And I welcome you to fact-check my claims and consider what you may have previously believed to be wrong. Here are some examples of scripture from the Talmud. And you can go to GTVFlyers.com, GoMTV.com and learn more. Have any of you heard of it? Yama Ba'ath, forty-nine B. Jesus was a.
Mr. Mayor, this is straying from the subject matter jurisdiction of this body.
The, understood. Will, will give a warning as far as that's concerned? And can you bring it back to jurisdictional matters?
Mayor Klein, can I, I rise with a point of order before we get back to this. I, I think, you know, young folks these days refer to it as a hack, right? You can hack the system by coming up with some sort of workaround to break the. City Clerk, I'm, please, right? They refer to it as a hack. And the hack in this case is to say, I think the city of Sunnyvale should pass a resolution that. And it gives the appearance, Mayor Klein, that somebody's talking about something within Sunnyvale's subject matter jurisdiction, when in fact, it's merely a hack to go on to something that is not, that it's offensive comment or something that's not in the city of Sunnyvale's jurisdiction. I ask Mayor Klein, and I very much respect you as presiding officer, you know, I think a shorter leash, a substantially shorter leash is in order. Thank you.
Understood. I've had many discussions with the city, city attorney on these matters and go ahead, city attorney.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the First Amendment gives the people the right to use racial epithets, profanity, and other inappropriate language as long as it's intertwined with political speech. So that doesn't mean that every word has to be political speech, but if there's a, if there's sufficient request, and in this case, about the resolution, then the profanity or the racial epithets have, have to be permitted under the First Amendment.
So through the mayor, if I may, city attorney, as always, I defer to your expertise and wisdom in this difficult moment. So I find it quite objectionable that somebody can use this hack, right? So the mayor's gone to great lengths as the presiding officer at the beginning of the meeting, saying, right, subject matter jurisdiction, things that are within the business of the, of the city of Sunnyvale. And yet the hack exists where somebody can say, city attorney, I think that Sunnyvale should pass a resolution that, et cetera, et cetera. So can we get to a point in the city of Sunnyvale, city attorney, where that hack is disallowed?
It's not a yes or no question. It depends on whether or not there's enough of a reference. So in a case of this situation, talking about the resolution with the conflict between Israelis and Palestinians, if you start to talk about oranges or apples, then obviously the oranges and the apples, why, that's a bad. If you start to use profanity that's unrelated to the resolution, then you would be able to rule somebody out. But as long as the profanity or the racial epithets are tied to the reasoning for adopting a resolution, unfortunately, the First Amendment would prevail. I shouldn't say unfortunately.
I, I understand.
Because it's a complex.
The First Amendment is the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America, by the way, which a lot of people in this room were sworn to uphold when they were either appointed or elected. So I totally get that. Let me, let me ask a different question is, you know, I just search in my mind for additional tools in the tool bag for the presiding officer, Mayor Klein, to use at his disposal. Can we change the duration of each person's public comment moving forward at this point in time to something like thirty seconds? Is that a thing that we can do?
Sorry, I thought I had left it on. You could do it at the beginning, obviously, but if you lower the time limit doing someone's speech, then the course would interpret that as being content-based. You did not like the content of the speaker, so therefore you shorten their time, and that would be treating them differently and therefore a violation of the First Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel.
So City Clerk will continue. Almost to our fifteen minute, oh, thank you, Counselormember Mellinger.
I was just going to say, we have spent more than fifteen minutes on oral communications.
That's where I was.
Thank you.
Yes. City Clerk, can we continue that speaker? Or no, that speaker was out of.
That speaker was real out of order, Mayor.
Correct. Thank you. So for those people that have raised their hands, we will be moving the remainder of oral communications to the end of the meeting. So from a remote standpoint, the speakers in the room, we went through all the in-person speakers. And so any remote speakers will be after our general business. With that.
Mr. Mayor, if I, one last thing, if I may say, I think the, the text that made this out of order was the reference to Jesus and, and being the word that he used. And it's not tied, that's not tied to the advocacy for the resolution and is what made it out of order and not within the subject matter jurisdiction.
Thank you, city attorney. I appreciate that. Next, we will move.
Sorry, Mayor. Before we move on, just for the members of the public that raised your hand, if you stay and join us for the continued oral communications later, you'll need to re-raise your hand. I'll be lowering your hands now so that we know who's raising their hand to speak to the upcoming agenda items.
But Mayor Klein, if I can rise with another point of order or clarification from the city clerk, Mr. Carnahan, great job. Thank you. I appreciate you and the city clerk's office and not easy circumstances. I would, I would just ask, we have a rule, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a law or a rule or whatever, but each individual gets one shot and one shot only at public comment. So notwithstanding the fact that we did a chunk up front and now there's going to be a chunk at the back, to any and every extent that we can not allow repeat speakers, that's something that I would appreciate. And I, I acknowledge that's not an easy thing to track.
Yes, understood. That is what we attempt to do through managing speaker cards and remote public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our consent calendar. I'll go ahead and open the public comment on our consent calendar items. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine in your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes. Is there anyone interested in speaking on a consent calendar item? I have no speaker cards. City Clerk, do we have any remote speakers wishing to speak on a consent calendar item?
Mayor, we do have one hand raised. Jim A., we're going to unmute you so you can identify which consent calendar item you'd like to speak to, and then followed by that, Carrie L.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Which item would you, which item would you like to speak on?
Fuck you, faggot.
Thank you, city clerk.
Next up, Carrie L. We're going to unmute you so you can identify which consent calendar item you'd like to discuss or have polled.
Uh, the one. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, the item two regarding the Corn Palace project.
So that will be after consent calendar? So, so stick around and we'll be moving on to that. These are agenda item, or non-agenda, sorry, consent calendar items?
Paul K., it will be unmuted so you can identify which consent calendar item you'd like to address. They lowered their hand.
Okay.
So no additional remote public speakers for the consent calendar.
Thank you. I'll close the public, I'll close, I'll close the oral communications on those items and bring it back to council. Counselormember Melton.
Yeah, thank you. In the absence of the vice mayor, I rise with a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Counselormember Mellinger.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
First up, Counselormember Cisneros, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Counselormember Melton?
Yes.
Counselormembers Nivasan?
Yes.
Counselormember Sell?
Yes.
Counselormember Mellinger?
Yes.
The motion carries six, zero with the vice mayor de absent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general business. As stated at the beginning of the meeting, this council meeting is considered a limited public forum, and the council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during public hearing items must be limited to the agenda item being considered by council. If a speaker does not comply, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order to allow the city council to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and to protect the rights of other speakers. The presiding officer will not rule speech out of order because the presiding officer disagrees with the content of the speaker's speech. Our first item is item twenty-three dash zero-nine-four-one. Approve the preferred concept plan for the Corn Palace Park project and find the action is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines fifteen-three-oh-three and SEQA Guidelines section fifteen-three-oh-four and one-five-one-six-eight-C-two and Public Resources Code Section two-oh-one-nine-four-C. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is. If we can have that loaded, please. All right, so here we go. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Ing. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works. And as the mayor kindly noted, we'll be talking about the Corn Palace Park and the preferred concept plan tonight. Okay, little bit of background on the project itself. Previously, the site was agricultural land. That's an old picture that we have of the actual station that would sell corn out there. Over the years, the western portion of the property was developed into single-family homes in 2013. The second half of the property continued to be farmed for a couple more years and then was redeveloped as well into single-family homes. As part of that second redevelopment, two acres on the site were identified and a combination of PDF required, donation of land as well as city-acquired land, two acres was identified for a mini park out at this site. So the site itself looks like this right now from a bird's eye view. On the right-hand side or the eastern side is Lawrence Expressway, and it's surrounded on the remaining three sides with single-family homes. There is an existing sound wall on the Lawrence Expressway side, and it is just bare land right now. So I alluded earlier to the site being a mini park. I thought we'd go back to the Parks of the Future Study, which was approved by the city council in 2009 for the definition of a mini park. It's essentially a small park that is intended to serve the neighborhood. In small, we mean up to three acres in size. It's intended for the residents to be able to easily access the park via walking or scootering or, or biking. And it's going to have our basic neighborhood recreation amenities, meaning things like playgrounds, benches, and landscaping. It's not intended to take the place of some of our larger parks. So speaking of larger parks, if we look at this site in proximity to what else is around it, you can see the quarter-mile radius around it. And within the half-mile radius is Ponderosa Park. And Ponderosa is our next nearest larger park. It's over nine acres in size. It's classified as a community park, and it's got lots of amenities. It's got a multi-use field for baseball and soccer. It's got basketball and tennis sport courts, playgrounds, restrooms, a multipurpose building, as well as reservable picnic areas. In terms of how we got here today with a preferred concept, there were two rounds of community outreach that were, occurred earlier this year. We did take the preferred concept to the park and rec. commission on November eighth and received a five-zero recommendation for you tonight. And we're here tonight to go over the preferred concept. Hopefully, we'll get approval to move forward with design and then after that, construction. So a little bit about community outreach. First round consisted of both a community meeting as well as an online survey. Both were well-attended. Fifty-two attendees in the virtual community meeting in May, a hundred and seventy-four responses from the online survey. So we got a lot of really good feedback. At this first round of community meeting, we introduced the project, gave some background, asked the residents, what potential park features do they want in their new, in their new park? And we also dived a little bit into whether they were more interested in this park being more of an active park versus a passive park. in this park being more of an active park versus a passive park. So two-hundred-and-twenty-six total responses between the virtual meeting and the online survey. Some of the key takeaways is most of the folks preferred that the park be more passive in nature. Only about twenty-two percent, less than a quarter, from the online meeting wanted it to be more active in nature. And only ten percent from the online survey, which had even more participants, wanted it to be active in nature. So things that we heard were that we didn't, the residents did not want this particular park to be a real big draw. They want it to be mostly passive in nature. We also asked if they were interested in having Wi-Fi amenity at the park. Didn't get a very strong response on that either. Only twenty-two percent requested Wi-Fi be included in the project in the survey and about the same number, about twenty-one percent at the community meeting. So we took this feedback and went into round two for community meetings. And in round two, what we did was we developed three concept plans to share with the residents. This happened in July and again, very well-attended. Forty-nine people in the virtual meeting, a hundred and ninety-five responses in the survey that went out. And so the three concept park designs, took the feedback from outreach round number one and we came up with three plans. So Concept A is our blend of active and passive park features. Concept B is a little bit more passive than that and Concept C is the most passive. So let's talk about what those look like. So Concept A, this is our blend of active and passive uses. It has some sports courts. There was a tennis court, half-basketball court that were located along the Lawrence Expressway side of the park, a grass field located more towards the residential portion of the park, a totlot playground, as well as restrooms. Has the most active of, active uses of the three concepts that were developed. One thing I do want to mention is that there's some commonality amongst all of the three concepts that were developed by our consultant and they are, that there's lawn area, that there's abundant shade trees, there's plenty of seating via benches or seat walls, walking path throughout the site, raised planters, as well as necessary stormwater treatment features. So you'll see that in all three concepts. So Concept B is more passive than Concept A. It has two playgrounds, both a totlot playground as well as a youth-age playground. Again, we've located those active features more towards the Lawrence Expressway side of the park. There are some fitness equipment stations located around the perimeter of the walking paths, but it doesn't have the sports courts that were outlined in the previous concept. You know, it doesn't have the half-basketball, doesn't have the tennis and there isn't a restroom. The most passive concept is Concept C. And that one has one totlot playground only, it does not have a youth lot. And it's flipped in the way it's laid out in that the active use or the totlot is more towards the corner that is flanked by the residential areas and the grass is more towards the center. So what did we hear from community meeting number two? In the meeting itself, sixty percent, one key takeaway, sixty percent selected Concept B as the preferred concept. And one thing to note is that most community members really voted against the active park features of Concept A. We got a little bit different results from our online survey in that almost half of our respondents selected Concept A as the preferred concept. But when we drilled down into that a little bit more, what we discovered was that the respondents liked the layout but were split on the park features. So taking that information, the preferred concept was developed. And so what we did was we blended the features from Concept B into the layout of Concept A. And we feel this is the best way of presenting all of the feedback that we received from both community round, community outreach rounds one as well as two. So what does that look like? Looks like what's on the screen right here. So we've got a lawn area that is towards the corner that is flanked by residential. There are playgrounds, both youth lot as well as totlot. We have shade structures and trees, picnic areas, fitness stations along the walking paths, seating, raised planters, and our necessary stormwater treatment areas. So if we want to dive a little bit more into a few of those things, here's the play lot areas outlined in org. here. Again, a totlot as well as youth. Both of these lots are envisioned to have rubber safety surfacing as their surface for accessibility. One of the things that I do want to mention is that it's our intent to include inclusive play features as part of these lots. We haven't yet developed the full-on design for each of the playgrounds. But as you've probably noticed with all of our recent designs for park overhauls and park renovations, we are definitely including inclusive features as elements of these parks. They haven't yet been determined for this one, but on the screen are some examples of things that we might see as we move forward through design. There is seat walls and benches that are available for seating that are going to be flanked by trees. This is conveniently located between the two lots for any parents who, you know, might have to sit in the middle and swivel their head and watch their kids play. There is a walking loop that surrounds the grassy area as well as three fitness stations that are going to be located along the edges for folks who might want to partake in that. And then there is a small picnic area underneath a shade structure, also located in the middle between the two playground areas. So next steps. So this slide that we're showing here is next steps for a typical project where we would be looking at design through the winter and the spring, bidding in the summer, and then going out to construction. We think it's probably, you know, somewhere in the nine-month duration or so for construction. But this project was deliberately moved forward by the council a few years ago and so it's really our intent to try to beat this schedule. And so we'll be driving and working to deliver this faster with the intention of trying to hit December of 2024. So a recommendation as written into the staff report tonight is to approve the preferred concept plan for the park project as shown on attachment four of the report and find the action as exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines section fifteen-two-six-two. So with that, that end staff presentation, I do want to acknowledge a few others in the room with me. Of course, Chip Taylor, Public Works Director, but also sitting behind me is Nate Scribner, Assistant City Engineer, as well as Grant from Calendar, Calendar Design, who is our landscape architect working on the project. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We have several questions from council. First up is Councilmember Sell.
Yeah, I think it's really wonderful that you did so much outreach and had three distinct alternatives for people. And clearly, it seemed like, you know, a combination are B ranked high and then A in a different case ranked high. So then you kind of brought them together. So I thought you did a really good job in that. In terms of artificial turf, I think you said that in the Monday morning questions, but I just wanted the community to know, does this have artificial turf or does it have natural grass?
There's no artificial turf anticipated to be included in this project.
Okay. And then for the playground, you have this rubber surface, which you need kind of a bouncy surface in case, so for safety reasons. But how does that make it accessible? Is that like, if you're in a wheelchair, then you can get on that? If there was like wood chips, you couldn't?
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. So that's all my questions. I think it's a beautiful park.
Thank you.
For your work on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, I'll, I'm happy to pick up where Councilmember Sell left off with some heartfelt thank yous to city staff and to our incredible consultant. What really leaps out to me on this project is the community engagement. And I've observed some of the Zoom meetings that have happened. I think consultant has done a great job of listening to the community and synthesizing the words that are coming back and sort of funneling to the preferred design that we have in front of us tonight. So I really appreciate that. If council is of a mind to make a tweak here or there, that could happen. But then again, the community has spoken and if the will of council is alternative one, I feel like I'd be okay with that as well. So thank you for that. I love the inclusive play features. Jennifer, the words that you said about doing everything possible to finish this by December thirty-first, 2024 is music to my ears. And one thing that I know for a fact is that anything can go wrong on a project like this, right? You could put it out for RFP and the lowest bid may exceed the budget or there could be some sort of supply chain issue with who knows what. So there are all sorts of things that could go wrong and I totally get that. But staff's not going to be an issue on this. I'm not coming up with exactly the right words, but I really do appreciate, Jennifer, that staff is going to manage this like crazy to hit the date and I appreciate that. And I also acknowledge not everything is under our control. So I totally get that. I've gotten some feedback from members of the community in District Four about a fence that staff may have heard of. I'm going to let the members of the community speak for themselves. So if we hear on Zoom about a fence on the perimeter of the property, we may hear about that too. Our members of the public, Zoom is kind of choppy waters these days and please don't be discouraged if you're hearing some unpleasant things. Be strong because you have a right to advocate for the fence that you want on this. So I'm just encouraging people not to be discouraged if we're having some sort of inappropriate speech, which I hope does not happen. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few thoughts on this. Let me reangle my microphone here. So a couple things. Let's start with picnic tables and what's going to be in the shade structure? Is there an idea that the shade structure is going to have some kind of furniture in it? Is it just going to be a roof over an empty space? What is the idea of how that shade structure is going to look?
It's anticipated that we would have a small picnic area, so that's tables and benches underneath a shade structure.
Okay. So I'm noticing that we've got a concrete path, concrete pavement along the sort of northern bit of the park. There's a yellow strip under that with some benches. Is that yellow strip decomposed granite?
Yes.
Okay. I am looking at this park now and I'm looking specifically at the southwest corner of it. And what I can tell you, looking at this corner, is there are going to be a lot of people cutting across the park from Toyon to Lilly, diagonally sort of behind that sign. I, it is the, it strikes me as the sort of thing that's an obvious shortcut. And we might want to put a small decomposed granite path at that corner as well. I'm just throwing that out to my colleagues. You know, there's also always the option of build the park and see where the grass dies and that's where you need to put the paths. They call that elephant paths, but I can guess there's going to be one of those around there. I know that we are trying to balance active and passive uses and try to keep the passive uses nearer, nearer towards the homes based on this design. That said, I do think that it could be appropriate to have some small, some benches and/or one or two small picnic tables on fronting perhaps Lilly along the sort of southern stretch there. Because one of the things, I live across from Canary Park and one of the nice things about Canary Park is that I can walk across the street and there is a picnic table right there that I can sit down at if I want to. If I want to meet with friends there or what have you or have outdoor activities, it's right there. So that is an idea that I am kicking around in my head is the idea of having something, something like some benches or one or two small picnic tables along that southern strip. Let's see here. Is that exercise equipment in the little notches going into the pollinator garden? On the north?
I believe, if I'm looking at the right place, the same as you're looking at, I believe so, yes.
Okay. Do we know what exercise equipment that would be? There's only going to be a couple items?
There was a slide that we flashed with some examples. Yes, only a couple of items and they're intended, I guess if you think about the old-school fitness stations, they were just sort of static. But the new style of them, some of them actually move where you can, you know, swivel your hips or move your arms with different equipment. But they are stationary in place, like.
Right.
Foundationally stationary in place.
I would be, so I am again looking at this area and thinking that perhaps those might, you know, right next to the pollinator garden might be a good spot to have a bench. It might not be if that would disturb the pollinators. But I'd be curious, you know, how, let's say, how well-loved this equipment is, how popular it is. I'd also be curious to hear from members of the public whether they like the idea of having exercise equipment there, whether they might like to have something else or more space dedicated to the pollinator garden or what have you. And let me check my notes here. I know that game tables were not a super-high priority. How expensive is a game table compared to, say, a regular picnic table? Is it about the same cost?
It's roughly comparable, yeah.
And it is certainly usable as a regular picnic table as well. It's a, I've seen them, there's what, concrete tops?
Yeah, I mean, a game table typically has like an embedded chess or checkers top to it and so absolutely can just be used as a regular table.
I, I will say that I would be interested in having one or two game tables at the park. I think that's the sort of thing, you know, it's not the highest priority, but it is the sort of thing that can activate a park and it does have minimal cost. So those are some of my thoughts on that. I will, on this, I will be looking forward to hear from members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Srinivasan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation. Really, I am really impressed with the community outreach. The participation both online and in person were really excellent. For a small park of this size, I'm really impressed. I used to live nearby and then I drove by this park. This is a very good concept. I had few questions. One is positioning of fitness equipment. Seems to be two are on the north side and one on the south side. Any logic for that or? It's a small park, so people can walk across if they want to.
I don't know, I think we're just trying to evenly space them around.
Okay. Okay. I also like that the existing palm tree is preserved, which is very good idea. We shouldn't destroy that. And then regarding the picnic area underneath the shaded thing, is this reservable or first come, first served or?
Typically, yeah, typically for a park of this size, it would not be reservable. It's, it's just show up because it's intended to just serve the nearby neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm a bit confused. Slide two said that it's two acres. Slide four said three acres. What is it?
Sorry for the confusion. Yeah, slide four was really how the Parks of the Future Study defines a mini park and it is less than three acres in size. The size that we are working here tonight for the Corn Palace site is two acres.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Cisneros.
Thank you and congratulations on getting your first presentation to council in person out of the way. It's exciting. I do have a couple of questions. So what was the process of re-engaging the public in completing the second survey? Because when I read it, it seemed to say that that survey was comprised of all people who were involved in, in the round one.
So everyone who's involved in the previous round is obviously, you know, invited to participate in round two. The numbers are pretty similar. I don't know that we've, the survey, I don't know that we have enough data from the survey to be able to cross-reference round one surveys with round two surveys to see if they're exactly, you know, the same folks participating. The, the information that we received from the, from the rounds were a little different. So my guess is they might be different participants.
Interesting, interesting. In the future, I'd love to get just a couple of questions on that, just to be able to see, you know, because it's really great when you're able to re-engage and get that feedback process and just to kind of track like, what did, did, did we do really good? Did, did that happen or not? And then think about like, how can we maybe target outreach next time? But we don't have that information. So just in the future, that might be a good thing to bring up, just to help us learn as we go. So, but that was very interesting and they provided really helpful feedback. So, yes, and so is, is a picnic area just tables? There's no barbecue or any other kind of amenities there? Because when you see it, parks and picnic tables, you often expect to see something like that there.
Yeah, no barbecues anticipated at this site. Barbecues are typically located at larger parks than this one. So it's tables and benches.
And then we have that mounted lawn, which I noticed is specifically not called a sports field. So I imagine that would not be reservable either.
Correct. And, and mound is kind of a misnomer. It's not really, it's not really mounded. It's more graded just for drainage purposes. It's, it's not a mound as you would anticipate that has a, a hump in the middle. It's gonna feel pretty flat to anybody using that, that lawn area.
And just, what are some of the ways that we expect people to use that lawn most frequently? Because I'm thinking about if it, and especially if it is, like you say, it's more flat, like pickup games, things like that. But besides that, and that would make it kind of like a sports field, how can people best use that space?
Yeah, I mean to, you know, I can envision moms chasing after young kids, you know, tossing a frisbee, teaching your kid how to throw a ball and play catch. I mean, there's lots of ways to just use it informally without it being striped as a sports field.
Awesome. Okay, that's very helpful. I was just trying to get the picture, really imagine this park where it is. And then lighting at nighttime, you know, safety is always a concern and I know that we have, the park is not open after sunset. I'd imagine that would be true for this one as well. However, of course, like having a completely dark park isn't very safe either. So I'd love to hear more about what the lighting plans are.
We have lighting around the edges of the park because they are public streets. There'll be some spillover for that. I'm going to swivel my head and look at Nate or Grant and see if we, I don't remember if we had any bollard lighting or anything like that. Okay, so Nate's confirming pathway lighting.
Okay, awesome. And something that, that I would love to consider too is just, you know, because if somebody does, we, we noted that cross the, right? It's an obvious shortcut, right? So to have, if people are going to use that at nighttime, I could just imagine like, you know, you're walking and you take the path is thinking about the safety there, not necessarily like either, so if somebody does it, I don't want them to be unsafe and just kind of like in a darkened path. But if it's easily accessible like that, kind of figuring out, what is that trade-off there to make it safe so that you can kind of see your surroundings and be aware of your surroundings if that is something you choose to do, if it's not going to be gated off at sunset or, you know, I, I, that's just something I'm thinking about. I don't have any answers. But, yeah. Anyway, that's all of my questions. I look forward to hearing public comment and, and looking through this, it looks really great. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I have several comments, questions. First, I just want to thank you for the robust community outreach. I attended at least one of those sessions and it was good to see so much feedback and, you know, look at the surveys and all that. Several questions about, first, no theme. And then there were comments somewhere in there about, in the, in the feedback about themes. And so can you clarify, many of our parks have themes? Can you clarify kind of what process that is? And from a, from a, from this park standpoint, is there a theme and is there a planned theme?
We definitely have an informal theme because it was, you know, the Corn Palace and farming agricultural site before. We've informally tried to hold that. I think staff tried to do some digging into how themes get created for parks and how the original ones were developed for our existing parks and we couldn't find a formal policy.
Okay, so that would be, that's
I was just going to say certainly if council wanted us to pursue a certain theme or directed us to look at, you know, a theme for the park, we, we could do that.
And, and generally, you know, it's like, not that we have generic me is a theme, but I do think that, that having a theme makes it, a park more interesting. And I look at a lot of our parks that already have themes and I don't think any of them have a agriculture or like a farming theme right now that I remember. But so, yeah, so I do, I do, you know, as we're moving forward with this, be interested if the public is interested in, you know, trying to develop that theme and that theme normally reflects itself in any artwork or playground equipment or, or things of that nature. As far as the mound, and I want to go a little bit deeper here because, you know, trying to see, you know, you talked about a mounded field and I, and I'm looking at different parks. And so our, our last park, Mowekma Park, was that a flat area? Was that, was there a mound in the center of that, that large circle area or?
Yeah.
Kind of what, how does that represent?
Yeah, the grass, the grassy round area at Mowekma was not totally flat in like a zero percent grade. What we're anticipating for this site is something similar, very gentle, very gradual. You probably would not notice it if you were using it, something around two percent, maybe three percent. But if you think about it, that is the cross-slope of a typical sidewalk and you don't really notice that there's any slope to that. And so I'm anticipating it would be a similar feel out at the grassy area.
And, and just seeing how it's laid out, I was a little surprised that it's kind of focused at the very center of this area as opposed to like the edges or a berm around the whole thing. And just trying to get a better feel for how that's engineered and, you know, it, just looking at kind of concentric circles from this standpoint, does that mean it's kind of increasing going up and then the water is going to the edge or, or is it pooling in the center?
No, that, that is correct. Instead of it being a bowl, we anticipated to be slightly mounded in the center so that any runoff from the center of the grass kind of goes towards the edges.
And I'll jump in, sorry, Chip Taylor, Public Works Director. The word mound probably shouldn't have been used, right? I mean, it really isn't a mounded. It's just a drainage and it's, it's pretty flat. If you go to Mowekma, it feels flat, right? You don't see that, but it, it does have that grade. So that's what you're going to kind of see. And so the normal user probably isn't going to see or feel a mound at all. It's just going to look like a regular grass area.
And that's appreciated. And that's one of the things that, that trying to get a better feel, when you, when you say mound, I'm thinking berms and, you know, if you're running up, slight uphill and light, slight downhill, that, let's say limits a pickup game of soccer or football or something of that nature that might be played there to some degree. And so, so I appreciate that clarification. As far as historical, you know, so the Corn Palace was, was a, you know, historic agricultural site for many years for, for the city. What's planned for the site to represent the, that historical callback and, and, you know, kind of educating future residents on, on what was at this site?
So as part of the development for the site, a plaque was commissioned, historical plaque with a nod towards that. And so it's intended that that plaque be installed within the park site. I think we provided a picture of it. I don't have a picture of it on the slide deck, but I think we provided a picture of it in the Monday morning questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then as far as all access, all ability, and I, you know, I've, I've met with Magical Bridge Playground on like Mowekma Park and we, we did add all access, all ability equipment there. And then we put in certain areas bark that conceivably makes that equipment not really accessible by, you know, basically surrounding a piece of equipment with, with bark. And so, you know, one of the things I saw was a letter from, from Magical Bridge Playground offering to review this or, or future parks. What's your stance on, you know, further evaluating the usability of the, of this equipment? You know, because it's one thing to put in all access, all ability equipment, but then if it's, then if you can't get to it or something of that nature, you kind of defeated the purpose.
Yeah, for this particular site, we anticipate using rubber surfacing. So it negates the, even though, even though bark is considered accessible, you know, it does have some maintenance component to it, right? You have to always make sure it's flat and level with the surrounding area for it to be accessible. In this case, we're anticipating using the rubber surfacing, which will just continue the flatness of the walkway or whatever is around it.
Okay. And then as far as benches and I, I like the concept that councilmember Mellinger was talking about benches on, on the southern portion of the, of the site. Because I do think that, you know, you, you look at, you try to ring this and you try to create as like, if you need to sit down, the only way you can sit down I see right now is, is entering the park and going in the middle. Does staff have any recommendations on putting benches on the southern side? Whether or not that's in the park strip or amongst the trees? You know, what, what would you look at from that standpoint from emotions to add additional benches?
I would say if the council gave us direction to add additional benches on the south side, that is something that we can be included as part of the design moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that is all of my questions. Next up is councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As usual, I forgot a couple of mine until I said I was finished. So I have two. We're putting the playgrounds on the eastern edge of the park, which is closest to Lawrence. Lawrence is a very, very intensive expressway. Let's just say that. And so my question is, and small children are known to run off. And so my question is, are we planning to have any sort of barrier between those free, the expressway and the playgrounds to prevent, you know, children from making a sprint for the road?
There is a, there is a sound wall that is there right now. And so there is a physical barrier.
Already, right. I couldn't, I could not tell that from the, the layout here. Okay, excellent. So sound wall will, should be enough to provide safety there. The second question I had is running water. Whether there will be a water fountain for the park? You know, with, I know our standard is to use bottle fillers, but we have a totlot and a playground here. Kids scrape their knees, they have accidents, making sure that we've got running water accessible. We will have that?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
And our standard water drinking station does have bottle filler station.
Yep. Are we planning on one, two of those?
I'm being told one.
Excellent. That actually does it for my question this time. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next is councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, thanks. And likewise, I have, but I just have one that I forgot to mention. And we were talking about the, the rubber surfacing here and that is ADA best practice for that. I was just wondering, how hot does it get in like, say the summer? Like how hot can this rubber get?
Yeah, I, you know, we haven't had any issues with the heat. Most of these are colored and they're lighter in color, so they don't absorb the heat that much. So I can't tell you exactly, but I don't think we've had any issues or concerns related to that.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, it's just it's getting hotter, you know, every summer. And, and wanting to think if, you know, if, if that's okay for now, but also in the future, perhaps doing some, some shading there to provide like an area perhaps in the play area for, you know, some, you know, kids, kids start crying. As we've mentioned, having a place to go off in the shade and let people like cool off laterally and figuratively without necessarily leaving might be nice. Just thinking about that. And also, you know, as mentioned in the Parks and Rec Commission that, you know, hopefully that doesn't get too hot, but it sounds like we're not having a problem. So thanks, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit speaker cards to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call members of public participating in person first and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have one speaker card on this item. David K.
I guess you guys can hear me. Good evening, council. Thank you so much for having me here today. Thank you so much for, for hearing about the Corn Palace. Thank you so much for acquiring the property to make that property, to make that project happen. Adding parks to the city is definitely part of my modus operandi. It's something that I take very, very important to me. It's one of the reasons why I serve on the commission. While serving on the commission and overseeing this particular project, I enjoyed being part of it. I enjoyed being able to discuss it about the things that were important to the public, things that are important to the Parks and Rec Commission. And I would say if I could go back in time to talk a little bit more about what was going on at that commission at that meeting, I would say that the, the mound was a bigger issue that I should have hammered down literally and figuratively, as Ms. Cisneros mentioned. I think during the meeting, we talked about it being a three-foot gradual rise to the center of, of that. And seeing as how the, the preferred concept forego, for, didn't, left out a, a more adult playground. The, the basketball courts were left out, the tennis ball courts were left out, the pickleball was, all courts were all left out. The idea of having a flat surface would have been something I should have pushed harder for. There's really no need for that kind of a gradual rise. The other thing that I think I should have pushed harder for would have been a dog park. I understand that the dog off-leash area is an issue that's going to be brought up for ranking in the coming year. I'm sure that the DOLA people will like to discuss this particular park as being a part for that. But it was also a high-ticket item that was discussed numerous times at the outreach meetings. It was something that slipped by and didn't get picked up as much as it should have. So that will conclude my comments. I do appreciate the opportunity to serve you. I do appreciate the opportunity to serve the public here in the city of Sunnyvale. I do appreciate the opportunity to build more parks using our, our staff who are incredibly dedicated to the process and our staff at Parks and Rec doing the same thing. And I would say thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to revisit the discussion from a month ago.
Thank you, David. I have no other speaker cards. City clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor. First up is Mazin G., followed by Carrie L. Mazin, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hi, can you hear me at all?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for taking my call. First, I wanted to thank all the organizers, the consultants, the committee for doing a fabulous job. My wife and I were involved in several of the rounds and I love the way that all inputs and everyone was heard and very respectful. This is the kind of way we should be conducting business all the time. My question is really about the issue of the fence. Several of us live exactly back-to-back to the park. And at the moment, there is a six-foot fence, a metal fence, a temporary fence, which provides us privacy and safety of our own fence. Some of our fences are like a three-foot tall. At the moment, this issue was raised during some of the conversations, but no specific sort of outcome happened. We're concerned about privacy of, of, of our homes since there are only few feet, literally few feet from the park. We're concerned about some of these benches facing our private windows in our living room and bathrooms, et cetera. We would just like to ask the council to consider putting a fence for privacy reasons and consider also organizing the benches in such a way that we get some privacy in our own homes. Thank you so much for taking our call.
Thank you.
Next up is Carrie L.
Beg pardon, I actually had a question for the speaker.
Sorry, councilmember. Missed your hand. Councilmember Mellinger.
Yes, Mr. Mazin, was that right? My question for you, are you on the north, which side of the park are you on?
We're on the Toyon Avenue side. The houses on the Toyon Avenue are literally few feet from the park. Little different than the ones closer to the Lawrence Expressway.
I see. So sort of the north I see. So sort of the northwest corner of the park?
That is exactly right.
And so your request would essentially be for a fence along the northern edge of the park?
That is correct, at least for those houses that have that close proximity to the, to the park, is to have that kind of a, a fence.
Thank you very much. That clarifies things a, a great deal for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Carrie L., followed by Ying Wei. Carrie, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. And good evening, the mayor and the city council. And I'm really glad to see that the Corn Palace is becoming a park rather than something alternative. So I'm really grateful that there'll be another area where we can just keep some grasses around that would help keep the area cool and offer play opportunities for the neighborhood. I am just wanting to get that out there about the type of grass being used. Typically, in the past, the parks have been using warm-season grass, I'm sorry, cool-season grasses. It's the wrong kind of grass that that is the plan to be used. I recommend that the city consider warm-season grass, like the Bermudas. They use thirty-eight percent less water than the cool-season grass. They're more disease-resistant, resistant, they're lower in maintenance. There's little to no overseeding need, depending on the Bermuda grass variety that's chosen, and they're much more cost-effective than these cool-season grasses. So I do have some concerns about the type of grass being used that's not specified. So I'm really curious. And if, um, uh, cool, is a warm-season grass is being used, I would be really grateful to know that. I do would like to have shade over the playground, you know, like Alyssa says now was pointing out that the, due to climate change, it's getting hotter and hotter, that these kids are running around these little bodies and their little heat bodies are coming off. There's some shade that's really needed, and I would like to stress my hope and wish for that. And the third item is the rubber surfacing at the playground. There are safer, more environmental, eco-friendly options, such as engineered wood fiber, that can be used in place of rubber surfacing, because if you have to rip out the rubber surfacing many years down the road, it's not recyclable. Engineered wood fiber has a much more grinner footprint. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Ying Wei. Ying Wei, you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the city council, and I'm going to pull up your presentation. Ying Wei, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute.
Ah, yes, I saw that. Ah, yes, I saw that now. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, great. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Ying Wei. I'm a resident of the neighborhood of Johnson's to the north side of Companys Park. I appreciate to voice a concern shared by, by any, you know, community. Previously, Mazin just shared our concern. I want to add several more points on that. First, definitely, we fully support the development of this park. But the concern, the specific concern we had is the inclusion of a fence along the north border of the park, of the Johnson's to our neighborhood. I want to emphasize, the fence is not intended to block any access to the park. In fact, we propose including a gate to ensure the park remains accessible. And our request stems from a genuine concern for privacy and safety. With the park just several feet away to our homes, a fence would provide a necessary bar, barrier, maintaining the privacy of residents and the integrity of the park. Additionally, our neighborhood features two private narrow roads. There is limited parking. Without the fence, we anticipate increase the traffic and the parking issue, leading to potential safety hazard. This fence, therefore, is not just a boundary about a meaning to harmonize the relationship between the public space and the private space of our homes. It's a solution that respects the needs of both park users and the residents alike. So we understand the council's commitment to the public benefit, and believe that our proposal aligns with this principle. It's about ensuring safety, privacy, and well-organized community space. So in con, in conclusion, we ask the council to consider the inclusion of a fence in the park's plan. Thanks for your time and consideration. That, that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
And Mayor, before we move on to the next speaker, at least one council member has their hand up.
Okay.
Okay, next up, excuse me, next up is S.D., followed by Austin. S.D., you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Uh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Good evening, mayors and city council members. I thank you for giving this, giving me the, for, uh, expressed my thought about the Corn Palace Park project. So firstly, my, uh, quickness for the, uh, good design, with a nice layout. And we've really been looking forward for this project since we moved, like, two years ago. By the way, I'm like, why my car, uh, tires is like, why my, also on the north side of the park?
Can, can you get a little closer to the mic, or you're cutting out slightly?
Oh, okay. Let's see.
We don't hear you at all at this point?
Is it getting better now?
There it is. Continue.
Sure. So, uh, I'm actually, uh, the neighbor next, uh, like, across the street with Ying Wei, who just, uh, speak about, like, having a fence on the north side of the park. Uh, so my concern is also, like, with this park established, it would drive, like, traffic to our, like, neighborhoods, especially there are, like, a few, like, parking lot spots on the, can you still hear me? Sorry?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, there's a few, like, parking spot, uh, right, uh, next to the north side of the park. Um, you know, like, this is a newly estab, established neighborhood, and like, before, we have, like, package, um, uh, stolen issues around the area too. So we don't, we, we would like to, definitely would like to have the park, but we, we don't, we still want to, like, have some privacy for our neighborhoods. It would be great if we could have, like, a fence on the north side, like, any type of fence, it don't, um, it would be great. I could have a gate with, like, dedicated passcode, uh, like, uh, any type of fence that would, like, um, like, uh, protect our neighborhoods will be greatly appreciated. Uh, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Austin, followed by Zeke I. Austin, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, uh, thank you for taking my question. So I, I'm also, uh, at the, at the north of this park. And, yeah, I also want to reemphasize the, the fence importance. So I think a county is had a fence. That's why we feel the safety, and hopefully, the fence can still maintain. So this is the one thing. The second thing is that, uh, because of the Lawrence Express is very noisy, to be honest. Even, even with the, uh, the, the sound wall, I, I still think it's not enough. Especially, there are so many kids, like, playing on the playground. So I'm, I'm not sure whether the noise will disturb the playing of all the kids. So I'm not sure whether there's, like, a, a other procedure to, to, to block the noise. For example, maybe you can, like, build, like, a fence of trees, right? So it could, could, like, improve the, uh, the playing time for, for the kids. So that's the two things I want to raise up. So, uh, if you can consider that, that will be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Zeke I., followed by Amir R. Zeke, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Great, thank you. I'll keep it short and sweet. Uh, I was around earlier, and I heard what happened the first time there was public comment. And that bald boomer is really a fuckwit.
So, so can you please, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but can you speak to the matter?
Nigger, nigger, white power, hail.
Please, thank you, city clerk. Next speaker.
Next up is Amir R., followed by Anthony P. Amir, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. My name is Amir Rosenbaum, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I missed what happened earlier. I was just told by a family member that they moved public comment a little bit later. But I would, uh, like to ask the city council, I know it's not a back and forth.
So is, go ahead. Is it about this item?
Thank you. I don't know I was interrupted. But I would like to ask the city council to, um, pass a resolution or to specifically.
So can city, city clerk, can you cut him off? He's not speaking on the matter, matter at hand.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Can we, uh, say that no more hands will be accepted, other than the three that are currently raised?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Yes. Next up is Anthony P., followed by Ricardo. Anthony, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you. I, I'd just like to say, in regards to the items that we're speaking on tonight, that I really appreciate the city attorney earlier, giving the full extent of what should and should not be allowed to be said, and that patience for someone such as myself, who's been a longtime resident, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. In nineteen thirteen, the ADA was established to protect the Jewish child.
Sorry, they're not speaking on the, on this item.
Fuck you.
Okay, next up is Ricardo, followed by TKD. Ricardo, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Yeah, why is the mayor a kike?
Thank you, city clerk.
Next up is...
Mayor Klein, I, I rise with the point of order. I, I concur with Councilmember Mellinger's suggestion a few seconds ago, which was the next three would be the three, and we're now at the end of three.
No, we're, we had one more, and TKD was the third one. Yes.
So next up is TKD. You've been allowed to, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hi, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. First, I want to thank the, uh, city attorney and you guys for being quick to, to shut those people off. I mean, although I agree with them, I hate kikes just as much.
Thank you, city clerk.
And Mayor, that was the final public speaker for this agenda item.
Thank you very much. I'll close public hearing on this item and bring it back to council for final questions and comments. Councilmember Mellinger.
Sure. Uh, I guess I forgot to put my hand down, but I do have a few questions anyway, so we'll, we'll go. Um, uh, for city staff, regarding the type of grass that we're going to be planting on that field, which Ms. Levin asked about, are we planning to plant Bermuda grass or something similar? Is that TBD?
Um, we're not, you know, likely not Bermuda grass. And one of the things to note about that is, it really is a very hot-weather grass. It's something that has to have constant hot weather. So it doesn't necessarily work the best in our area.
Not in the winter.
Uh, yeah. So it's something that we look at, and we're trying to, uh, use grasses that we've used before, that we know work and have reduced, um, water usage as much as possible. That's always our goal. It's a little bit different than the athletic fields. We're looking at all sorts of opportunities there, based on the council action. But for this area, it'll just be our normal grass.
Okay, great. Ms. Levin also mentioned the, uh, engineered wood fiber as a possible alternative to rubber for the playground. Do you know anything about that? Is that something that we've looked into before?
Yeah, yeah, I can talk a little bit about that. So then, we do use engineered wood fiber at certain parks, and it can be ADA accessible, uh, in certain circumstances. Obviously, the, the rubberized, uh, surface that we use is much more compliant and much easier for especially someone in a wheelchair to use. And that's why we've leaned that way more than the fiber. Uh, but you can use it, but in this case, I would not recommend it for this use.
Understood. Um, that does it for me. And if we, I would be ready, uh, to second a motion, because I suspect that there is one coming. Uh, but I will likely have a couple of, uh, small amendments I will want to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Klein. Um, a couple of residents, Mazin Gilbert, Ying Wei, and some others, talked about a fence on the north side of the park. Can you tell me more about that?
Yeah, so there will be some decorative fencing that's more open and whatnot. That's typically what we do. But as far as the request for the privacy fencing, we haven't done that in any other parks throughout the city. We've only done it where we need it, like, if there was a sports field and we needed to make sure that we were blocking something. Uh, but otherwise, we don't put in any fences like that. Typically, it's certainly the property owners would have that opportunity to do that, and several property owners around parks have done that, where they put up fences. Uh, but there's a lot of parks where there isn't, and people like that view, and they like to connect and whatnot. So there's definitely that.
So I think I hear you saying, uh, Public Works Director, that the intent here would be, um, consistent with how we do it at every other park, um, that we have or is in development.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then one of our members of the public, um, talked about the sound coming from Lawrence Expressway, which is a real thing. It's been a real thing that has existed for decades. Um, also, the county has concepts of long-term changes, potentially to Lawrence Expressway. Can you give me just, uh, some thoughts to rationalize a park next to Lawrence Expressway that has a sound wall currently? And is there any easy mitigation to further dampen sound, or just what do you think about?
Yeah, there's not, there's not a lot of easy ways. I mean, certainly, when you're down and you're closer to the sound wall, in some ways, it's a little bit less, because the sound kind of goes and travels over that. Um, but there's not a lot of good opportunities like that. This was an opportunity site based on a development, so it fit there, and it worked for the neighborhood that is there, so it's a good location. Um, but it will have some of the noise from the area there.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I'll, I'll save my advocacy for later, but generally, I feel the same way. Lawrence Expressway is a thing that exists today that generates sound, and the park is going to be where it will be. So I get that. Um, and Mayor, if you please, when we're wrapped up with questions, I would be happy to make a motion on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Shereen Avason?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, we talked about fence, our public comments about fence, and then you mentioned that city does not install fences. But I also heard that there is a chain-link fence, uh, six foot high or something like that. Who did that?
Yeah, so when the park was taken over by this, or not taken over by the city, was, uh, what's the word I want you? Thank you. Dedicate. When, when the city took over dedication of the park, um, it was just empty piece of land. Um, and in order to kind of protect that, we put up a chain-link fence around the outside, um, and it gets, I don't know, periodic maintenance on the inside. So once we finish design and go out to construction, obviously, we would have a construction fence, but that fence that is out there right now would not remain in place.
Okay, thank you. Some, one of the public mentioned about a gate. Uh, what are your thoughts on that? And then the person also mentioned about a passcode or code, and then key or something like that. I kind of know the answer, but I would like to hear from you.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, you know, I think that, you know, the inner road there as well, and some of those parking spaces... Yeah, certainly. I mean, you know, I think that, you know, the inner road there as well and some of those parking spaces are actually public parking spaces. So, you know, blocking that access with some sort of fence or gate that has a passcode uh doesn't seem like that openness that we want for a park. Uh we haven't had that in any other parks for any sort of private entrance, I guess, into that park. Um so we're not anticipating moving forward with something like that unless the council wants to.
Right, and then distribution of the passcode itself, how do you let people know about the passcode? And then another speaker talked about the orientation of the benches. Any thoughts on that? They, uh what they seem to indicate is if the benches are oriented towards the north, they might lose some privacy.
Oh, on that, on that northern pathway there?
The northern side of things.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, it's it's just a pathway, so you'd have some benches along there. That was the intent, you know, is to have that just for seating as people are walking around. Um so, I mean, we could remove those if the council wanted us to, but, you know, I don't know, it'd be hard to reorient them because you, I guess we'd have to create a larger area of decomposed granite for that to be around. Um it would be kind of odd, I guess.
Okay. I'll just add one more thing. Um there is a pretty hefty, you know, distance barrier between the edge of the house and I'll call it the grass area. There's a pretty good amount of landscaping in between. Um I think it's something like twenty or thirty feet, um and then the benches would be on the edge of that. So they're not right directly, you know, within arms' reach of the homes.
Okay, I see some trees there too. Uh will they provide some coverage or something like that? Okay, talking about trees on the edge of the Lawrence Expressway, I'm assuming that they might also provide some barriers for noise or some, any thoughts on that?
You know, as far as landscaping, as much as it might visually seem like it helps, it typically doesn't change it based on some of the studies that have been done. It might a little bit in certain areas, but in general, it doesn't provide a lot of protection. But it also reduces that visual barrier there for the wall and everything and makes it look a little bit more vegetative in that area.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Next is council member Sal.
Hi, so um back on that, so um on the north side, there's houses there. So um the residents could choose to put up their own fence, which what some residents do there next to parks. Do we ever put like, you know, sometimes we have um a property and then um the property tries to, a new property, a new development tries to make sure that the neighbors have privacy, so they put up trees. Would having trees on the border of houses, would that be a possibility or?
I I think that, you know, the design has some of that, like Jennifer was talking about that buffer in that landscape. I think there are trees to try to create a little bit more of that. Um but I don't know that we would be able to plant a lot more, like to actually just completely remove it. Um but I think there will be a good landscape buffer there.
Okay. And then back to council member Sisneros was mentioning shade over the playground. And I didn't know, is that something that you can do or cannot do? Shade over the playground?
Yeah, well, we can engineer anything pretty much, but we can engineer anything if we really wanted to. I think the challenge is we really don't have areas where we have like a big shade structure because it becomes a pretty substantial structure to create shade there. And so those can wind up being costly because you have wind loads on them and all sorts of things, and then you have to maintain that. So it would be a challenge to do and potentially more expensive, and it's not something we typically do. Um and we haven't really had a lot of complaints about concerns of that. Typically, when kids go here, they're here for a period of time, you know, thirty minutes or whatever it might be, and then they go home. So it doesn't really seem to be a big issue.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then are there places where the benches are near trees and then there's shade?
Of course, absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. Next is council member Sisneros.
Yeah, great, thank you, and thank you for answering all these questions, and I just have a couple more. Uh because traffic was brought up, right, traffic and parking. And I was just curious, what is the typical usage for parks of this size and type? So something that's not super active, it's pretty small with limited usage. I'm just trying to get a sense of how many daily users or or what kind of traffic could we expect of a park like that?
Yeah, I don't think we have any strong data to show for a park this size exactly what it does, but most of the other parks that are similar don't have any sort of traffic issues. They're intended to be for that neighborhood, right? It's a mini park. It's for people to walk there from the neighborhood. The, it wouldn't be a park that somebody would want to actually like drive to. There's not like a huge draw to it where a lot of people would drive here. Um and so I think most people are going to be walking. And in this case, there's a little bit of a lack of parking in some ways, where then they probably would just go to Ponderosa right down the street and they've got a lot more opportunity there.
Yeah, absolutely. Um yeah, I I feel like this would be something that I'd be, you know, more concerned about and wanting to proactively address at this stage if Ponderosa Park and those big parks weren't so close and within that half mile radius, right, because the, I mean, those have big draws, right? So um yeah, point points taken, and I appreciate that feedback and concern though because when you have anything that's new and um, you know, potentially really amazing, right? You'd imagine that a lot of people are going to want to come, but but I think that, as you noted, that's not necessarily the case. Um and we've been talking about trees, which is really good. Um I was wondering what kind of trees are we planning to plant, because I know that we're working on drought tolerance. And it also just to, yeah, just what kind is there? We have the one palm tree that we're saving, which is awesome, but we see those, I I saw here it was noted as shade trees, but just wanting to get a sense of what uh what we're starting to put in the parks.
I don't know that we've fully determined that yet. Uh we tend to pick trees that are appropriate for the area, kind of go with the other trees that are in the neighborhood so that they don't um conflict with each other um and are, you know, drought tolerant and provide shade. So we'll develop that, uh the tree species a little bit more as we enter into design.
Mm-hmm, and when we put them in, are these going to be, and and forgive me, just because, you know, this is an exciting opportunity to put in a whole new park um with all, pretty much all new trees. When we put them in, how mature are they? Are they providing shade like off the truck and in the ground, or is this uh, you know, this is going to establish over time and we're projecting to a future where they're fully mature?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to be on the, and I want to say smaller side, but they're not going to provide shade immediately, right? There's, they're going to have to grow to some degree. The bigger box size you get, they call it, you know, for the trees, um they get to be very expensive and very difficult to get to the site and those sorts of things. So usually we wind up getting ones that are as big as we can to make it reasonable for us, and then we put those in and then make sure that they water and go. Some of these will grow pretty fast, you know, in nature, so, but it does, it does take a little bit of time. But there are some, some trees in the area, there'll be some shrubs, and there'll be the shade structure initially at least.
Okay, great, and like how fast is fast?
I mean, it's going to be.
For a tree that could be anything.
Yeah, it's going to be in the, in in a few years, you know, I mean, it's not going to be immediate, but every year you're going to see stages of it growing, and some are going to have more shade quicker than others.
Awesome, and just as far as um positioning the benches too, to just, I'm sure you guys have it, but it got in my mind. What if that bench could, would be shaded perfectly when it's mature versus now, right? So just to think about that, I'm sure you have it, but it came up, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Next is council member Mellinger.
Last thing for me, uh bicycle parking. Will there be bicycle parking at the park? Um and in particular, uh I've seen some child-sized bicycle parking uh structures or uh bicycle, uh what's the actual term? Um loops um that might be useful near the playground.
Um certainly, if the council desires, we can incorporate bike parking.
Es- especially since this is, since we're not envisioning a lot of people driving to this park, I think having some bike parking would be very appropriate. Um and given the playgrounds, you know, having some uh bike park, bike racks, there we go, uh that are appropriate for child-sized bikes would also be appropriate, I think.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just add, I think that that's definitely something we can incorporate. That's easy to do and it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Mellinger. And then going back to the fences very quickly, you know, and I, when I did a site visit, I focused on, you know, kind of the fencing that's already there, but didn't really pay attention to what fencing is um on the properties that are already there. Uh, you know, it looks like there's already a six-foot fence um basically ringing the backyards of of all the new, all the new homes that were that were built to the north. Is that correct?
Yeah, so there's a typical good neighbor fence um that the homeowners have.
Okay, and then as far as beyond that, um depending upon what that property owner wants, that would be a three-foot fence conceivably if they want something?
Taller than their six-foot that they have now?
No, um if if, so like there's, like the the front yard, because looking at, looking at the general layout, you have backyards and you have front yards that are part of this project um for for those homes, just those three homes to the north. Uh what would be the standard fence? And it might already be there, but I didn't pay attention because I didn't think about fencing until tonight.
Um yeah, I'll see if Trudy can help out with that.
I don't know if she was paying attention for that. We'll jump in with Trudy. We'll force in.
You always catch me when I decide to do something else. I'm sorry, could you?
It would be, so right now, these homes um to the, that are to the north of the Corn Palace Park, their backyards, we think, have six-foot fences. Um but to the the north side or the the front yards, quote unquote, front yards of the three homes, uh what would be the standard fence height that the, that a homeowner could put in? And it might already be there, but I can't remember on my visit.
A a six-foot fence would be allowed. Um you don't need any kind of permit for that um unless it's in the, what's the considered the required front yard, so we would need to look at that component of that. Um you wouldn't need a building permit. If you wanted to go to seven feet, you would need the adjacent property owner's um concurrence, um and you would need a, uh uh, you might need a building permit for that.
Much appreciated.
But you might not. It depends on the style of the fence.
Absolutely. Thank you. That was all my questions. Uh council member Melton.
Thanks, Mayor Klein. I'm ready with the motion when you are.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I rise with the motion for alternative one.
Council member Mellinger.
Second, although I will have some friendly amendments.
Thank you. Um uh can we tackle, mayor, uh the friendly amendments?
Absolutely, yes.
And I I'll just say, I I welcome all friendly amendments. One thing I'll be thinking of is uh A, does staff need it in the form of a friendly amendment, or is just verbal commentary sufficient? Uh B, I'd really like to keep this on track for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and also keep it on budget. I don't, I don't think any of the friendly amendments are going to be budget blasters or uh calendar issues, but those are the things that are important to me, and I'm I'm looking forward to hearing the friendlies.
You mean you didn't like the idea of a third playground?
Council, council member Mellinger.
In all seriousness. Um first friendly amendment would be to include a limited number of benches and or picnic tables on the southern edge of the park.
Staff, do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think that's fairly straightforward.
Yes, thank you.
Second would be to include a couple of game tables, probably near the playground?
Yes.
Is this an addition to the picnic tables, or are you specifying that the picnic tables have a game top?
Maybe that the picnic tables have a game top.
Easily done.
Yes. Um that bicycle parking be included near the playground?
Yes.
Um there are a couple of ones that I have, that I might want to get thoughts from colleagues on. The men, the idea of a corner path at the southwest. Council member Melton, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, uh my my experience on on that is these um ad hoc paths tend to present themselves by users over time. So I would be of a mind to just let it happen and then let staff deal with it operationally down the road.
Sounds good. That is the classic way of dealing with those sorts of things.
Thank you, council member.
Um and then the last question I have is sort of about the exercise equipment near the pollinator garden, actually second to last, um which is, do we want to think about making those little notches with the exercise equipment near the pollinator garden? I would be of a mind to take that out and just expand the pollinator garden.
If you're asking my opinion, when I think of pollinator gardens, I think of vegetables, I think of monarch butterflies, I think of many positive aspects, so I would be willing to accept that as a friendly amendment. I'm kind of looking in the direction of staff to see if that would be highly contrary to what um the public told us during outreach or um neutral. What does staff think?
Just to clarify, we're talking about removal of the fitness equipment along the north side of the walkway?
And the little concrete pads that they're on, so that there's more space for the garden.
Okay, um I think that's in line with the general feedback that we received from the residents that they wanted a more passive park.
Yes, and the very last, that the theme of this park shall be the Corn Palace. Um that corn, agriculture, palace of agriculture, that sort of thing can be the theme of the park to the extent that we have a theme.
And then I I feel like I'm going to say yes, and staff can, um you give council just a refresher on how we go about naming parks, because the theme of the park is different than the name of the park.
Yeah, yeah, the naming, the naming will come later as we get closer, and that'll go through its own process. It'll, like, we have to solicit names and then go through that process, so that'll come to you at a little bit later date for the actual name. Uh for the theme, our our intent so far was to to go, at least with like the play equipment as much as possible, to do some sort of farming agricultural theme, because we thought that just fit for the area, even though it's not themed per se, but to do a little bit of that. Um and then certainly, I think with um the art in public places, I think that LRS is already looking at that as one of the ideas for uh for the theme for the art, um along with probably some others as well. Um but I think that, at least for those elements, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, yes, thank you, council member.
And that does it for me. Thank you.
Okay.
To your motion?
Yeah, thank you. Um I'll I'll keep my advocacy brief. Um I remember how the two acres got assembled here in the city of Sunnyvale. So the first one, and by the way, this all speaks to uh council policy about parks, the park dedication fee that sometimes results in acreage being dedicated by a developer to the city of Sunnyvale. I forget the specifics, but it was roughly one of these two acres was dedicated to Sunnyvale as part of the development um that we have now at the Corn Palace Park. And then low and behold, along the way, city staff approached council and said, you know, actually, we have an opportunity to make this a two-acre thing, and wouldn't two acres be better than one, just because it's the best size? And low and behold, we had some money in the park dedication fund, which is another very highly successful policy that we have here in the city of Sunnyvale. So we were able to do the assemblage of the two acres. Um and it's already been discussed here tonight, Chip and Jennifer, just the really nice work that consultant has done with outreach on this project to synthesize what the community is telling us. There are going to be some things where um community members might feel like, I wish it had gone a little bit differently. But then again, this is all about synthesizing many voices, tracking all of the voices. Everybody can rest assured that they've been heard in the process, and it's just a synthesisation of the best possible outcome, which I feel that we're achieving here. Some of the things that I like about this park is um the inclusive playground features, that there was a focus on preserving uh the trees, and then the passive use of the park, I think, is um uh the best use of the land here, especially considering that we have Ponderosa Park with all of its active features um not too far away. Um so with that, um I encourage my colleagues to vote yes on alternative one as modified by the various friendly amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Mellinger.
You know, there are a few things that are as fun up here as getting to vote on a new park. Um this is, first off, a huge tip of the beanie to staff. Um this is a really great design. I think that this is going to be a really well-loved park. I think this is going to get a lot of use from the neighborhood. Um I think that what we've got here is something that will be a va- a space that will be vibrant, but not too vibrant, not vibrant to the point that it will disturb the neighbors. It's going to be a space, some very valuable open space in this uh area, which is a new neighborhood in the city. Um and, you know, I think we've got some great features here. I love the pollinator garden. I love the bioretention area. Um I think this is going to be a great park. Uh urge my colleagues to please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh council member Sal.
I really like the staff's collaboration with the community, with the outreach and the consultant really listening to the community as we heard from public comment. They appreciated that and working with um the Parks and Rec um commission, the uh. And so, this whole collaboration, you've done a really good job, and we can see it from the comments that this fence or minor things are what people are concerned about, but I don't hear any opposition for this new park. So, well done, thank you, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Shuni Vasan.
Thank you, I'll be supporting this motion. As I mentioned a long time back, I used to live near that area when corn was really grown in that field. It's really good to see a new park. And then, as staff pointed out, there is a bigger Ponderosa Park right walking distance. So this park is mainly used as a, as a leisurely, some small area. And then there are multi, multifamily homes nearby, apart from single family. So I am quite sure this will be very well-used. And then the features are really appropriate, in my opinion, in the sense that it's not overwhelmingly active park, as residents pointed out. So, it's a very well-thought-out design, thanks a lot for staff and consultant for doing this, listening to our residents, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you, and, yeah, as my colleague said, there's kind of nothing more fun than adding something like a park, or, or doing something that, you know, especially something like a park, where my grandkids could be playing there one day, you know, and I was here to go ahead and do it. And when we look at that, I, I don't just see how this would impact us now, but when we build infrastructure like a park, things that are meant for community enjoyment, I think about the, all of the impacts along generations that this will have, the kind of memories that will be formed here because of this decision tonight. And I, I just want to thank everyone involved in that decision, that means staff, that means my colleagues here and that, of course means members of the public who stepped up and said, hey, I want to be part of forming what those what those memories for future generations will look like, so it's a fantastic contribution to the city. And if you're listening and you have an opportunity to participate in something like feedback for a park, you know, I really hope you do get engaged, because it's something that will outlive you in the very best of ways. So with that, I just want to say, I live in a similar park configuration, you can say, I live near Murphy Park, but we have, you know, and it's even a little bit farther than here necessarily, but Washington Park is kind of the bigger park with the pool and the big draws, and has more of those parking in the facilities, whereas Murphy Park is typically some, somewhere where people who happen to live walking distance or nearby, go by for the, for the small playground, for the grass areas, for the picnic tables. And just seeing that usage, and, and I just want to highlight just how nice that is, to be able to have something that's really close to you, that just has the stuff that your kids need for a quick outing. And it's kind of nice, too, on a, on a busy day, not, not to have to necessarily rely on those big parks that may be crowded, and and so having those options of places to go, I think, just make quality of life all the better. And I really look forward to visiting it. Yeah, it's a really great, great time, and the configuration and the work staff did go ahead and, you know, put together a bunch of different opinions and come up with something that people really like from both, and not just saying, oh, this option has the most, so that's what we're going to go with, like now. Let's, let's figure out how to pull it all together, and I think that, so this has just been really well-done, and I, again, I really look forward to going and checking it out when it's built, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll be supporting this motion.
Sorry, Mayor, can I just interject for one brief moment?
Yes.
I'm not entirely sure what happened, but our Zoom livestream to YouTube stopped. People watching on YouTube lost the ability to watch. It has been restarted, so if they're, so it's going on the city clerk, Sunnyvale City Clerk YouTube channel, but it's a different link, because we can only livestream to something once. And we'll work with staff tomorrow to figure out what might have caused that to stop, because in Zoom, it looks like we were livestreaming the whole time.
Okay. But we fixed that problem.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion, definitely, you know. One of the things that we did from a council standpoint is we removed from our, from our strategic, strategic priorities, adding open space. That being said, it's still a priority from a city standpoint. You know, I think adding another park, which we continue to do every other year or so, is actually a very positive thing. And I, I just want to thank Councilmember Mellinger for, for bringing up bikes as well as benches. You know, I think the more of that we have at each of the parks, and whether or not that needs to be a standard checklist from a policy standpoint. I would have appreciated seeing where, you know, additional benches, but where the bike racks are going to be, as well as where the water, you know, conceivably the wa, the, the fountain or the, the water fill-up section is within, within the park. As far as removing the exercise equipment, I was a little disheartened about that. You know, I think if you look at, a lot of our parks were designed before the modern exercise equipment was put in place. So what you're looking at at Mueckma Park, I think is a great use of, of basically adult, at the end of the day, exercise equipment that is, doesn't make noise, but it's basically just some, a, a place within the park for people to exercise, and we focused on a tot lot here, and we focused on kind of a kid's playground. It's always good to focus on adults also, so I will be supporting this motion, but I wish that had stayed there, and I appreciate the addition of the themes, you know, I think staff has already been looking at that and figuring out what we need to do as far as not losing track of the heritage of the city, and making sure that, you know, the Corn Palace, whether or not that's farm equipment or corn itself, is implemented into, into the artwork, especially the playground, as far as this park is concerned. I understand that, you know, many of the residents had issues concerning privacy, and, and ultimately, you know, this is meeting what, what is being done within other parks around the city. That being said, you know, it's like, the, the, the six-foot fence that, from a privacy standpoint, for backyard privacy is a standard within the city, and then whether or not you have a separate fence along the front, front, uh, front yard is a whole other thing, but, you know, that can be dealt with through the planning staff, so, so, you know, I understand there's questions about privacy, but we have lots of parks, especially smaller parks, that are intermingled amongst, amongst neighborhoods, and so, you know, it's, it's difficult for people to, you know, and many people worry about that ongoing privacy. But ultimately, I think what this design is, and what we've come up with, is it works with the neighborhood, whether or not it attracts people, this will mainly be a park people walk to, and, and I look forward to, you know, seeing it final, finally come to completion. I appreciate staffs, you know, working so hard with, with residents and getting feedback, and I think, you know, what we've come up here with is, is a great design, so thank you for all that hard work. With that, City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
First up, Councilmember Cisneros, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Shuni Vasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Councilmember Melton?
Ultra enthusiastic yes.
The motion as amended passes six zero with Vice Mayor Dean absent.
Thank you, and at this point, we'll take a short recess. City Clerk, we'll do a five-minute recess and come back at nine eighteen. Thank you. Let's go ahead and reconvene. Our next item is item twenty-three dash ten twenty-two, Appeal of Labor's, Labor's International Union of North America, Local Union Number Two Seventy, of the Planning Commission Decision Approving Related Applications on a five-point-eight-two-acre site located eleven fifty through eleven seventy Kafer Road. Before I begin move on, Councilmember Cisneros has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And though I am not legally required to recuse myself from this item, out of an abundance of respect and caution around potential perceived conflicts of interest due to this item involving the property owner for the apartment that I currently lease, I will not be participating in this item, and will instead leave council chambers and leave it to my able colleagues here to discuss, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, my name is George Schroeder, Principal Planner, and I'm going to be presenting the, the appeal tonight for eleven fifty and eleven seventy Kafer Road. So to give some background on the project, this is a special development permit and tentative parcel map to construct a new two-hundred-twenty-five-unit apartment building consisting of eight stories. This includes forty-four total units of low-income units. Within the first three levels of the building are a parking structure that's integrated within the apartment building. And this, this site would share parking with some existing offices to remain on-site. So the offices would use the first two levels, and residential would, would have some parking on the third level and, and other two levels as well. The tentative parcel map is to relocate the existing lot line, to create one lot each for each type of land use. And the project is subject to some of the state housing laws, Housing Community Act, SP three thirty, and the density bonus law. This shows an aerial of the site area, this is near Kafer Road and Lawrence Expressway. And the site is at the, the southwest corner of, of Kafer Road and San Zino Way, and San Zino Way is a frontage road along Lawrence Expressway. This is in the Lawrence Station area plan, and it's right near the border with the city of Santa Clara. And as you can see, we've, we've had several recent approvals for housing projects in the Lawrence Station area plan, including two from last week, eleven fifty-four and eleven seventy Sonora Court. This is the overall site plan, so on the, the top part of the, the site, those are the existing offices that will remain as part of this project. And the apartments are proposed in the current surface parking lot behind those office buildings. And a new horizontal lot line will be placed in between the two. The project is proposing a couple of components from the Lawrence Station Sense of Place Plan. This includes a new large gateway sign at the corner that will announce entry into the planned area, clearly identify the Sunnyvale portion of, of the planned area. And also include a new shared-use path that would link up to the proper apartment property a new shared use path that would link up to the apartment property to the west, the Savoy Apartments, and that will essentially provide a shortcut for pedestrians and bicyclists to have quicker access to Lawrence Caltrain Station. And this is a large view of the apartment site. So San Zino Way is on the right side, and that's where residents would mainly access the parking garage that goes up to the second level. There would be pedestrian access all around the building, leading to the public sidewalk and also the secondary shared use path, which is publicly accessible. Offices, office users would access the site through another driveway on San Zino or through Kafer Road. And also as part of the project, new trash enclosure is going to be built for the offices as well to replace a couple of existing and then bring it up to current standards. Here is a rendering of the proposed apartment building. So it does draw inspiration from the industrial history of Sunnyvale. It has kind of a warehouse look to it. It has a rectangular building form that's timeless in nature. It has a well-defined base, top, and middle portion of the building with a combination of natural warm and dark colors. Brick veneer is used significantly throughout the project, which clads a building, and it's interspersed with cement and metal panels, stucco walls. And then this is the view from the southern part, near the border with neighboring property to the south. This shows the shared use path on the left side. And the architectural theme is carried throughout on all four sides with, you know, to make sure there's 360-degree architecture integrity. And then there's two large stepbacks on the south side, on the left side of this rendering. And this is for the resident amenity spaces, open space areas, and it creates a large stepback that helps to soften the mass of the building. And then the parking structure is on the first three levels. You can see that on the left side. It's clad with brick material, green screens that help to screen vehicles that are in that parking structure. So the planning commission considered this project on October 9th and voted seven to zero to approve the special development permit tentative parcel map, find that the project is consistent with the recent LSAP EIRs that were done in 2016 originally and 2021 for the increased housing. And there were some revisions to the recommended conditions of approval. These are currently reflected in Attachment Four for tonight's hearing. And then on October 17th, the city received an appeal from the Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union Number 270, known as LIUNA. Their basis of appeal is that the city did not evaluate indoor air emissions of formaldehyde within the interior construction with specifically the wood products used in construction, and that presence of high levels of formaldehyde is new information that warrants additional environmental review. The appellant is claiming that a subsequent EIR, Environmental Impact Report, must be prepared and recirculated prior to a decision, and that the city also adopt a statement of overriding considerations prior to project approval. So staff reviewed the appeal with its environmental consultant, Ascent Environmental. Our response is that the city is allowed to accept conclusions by its own experts. That's established by CEQA precedent, and disagreement amongst experts is not a reason to prepare additional environmental review or recirculate environmental documents. The project is required to comply with all applicable regulatory requirements related to formaldehyde exposure. This includes the California Air Resources Board or CARB standards that require Phase Two products that have much less formaldehyde than other wood products that were used in the past. Also, the current building code requires air filtration systems, which will also help to reduce exposure. The appellant had its own consultant or an indoor air quality consultant justify its statements and use some studies in their basis for appeal, but the studies were referenced were completed prior to these current state standards being to effect. The appellant's studies are also speculative in their data points. You know, for instance, we don't know how many, how future residents would furnish their homes or ventilate their windows, the number of hours they would spend indoors, so it's hard to know how much exposure they would experience. Also, the project does not exacerbate existing adverse conditions. CEQA is really focusing on the project's impacts to the environment, not the environment's effects on the users of the project. That's not required to be analyzed under CEQA. Also, air quality was analyzed as part of the CEQA checklist that was done as part of the project. It confirms that the project is within the allowable emissions established by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. So therefore, we find there's no significant new information that warrants environmental review or recirculation of environmental documents. So the council can consider these three alternatives, which is to deny the appeal and affirm the planning commission's decision to approve the project, and then the same with modifications, or grant the appeal and deny the special development permit tentative parcel map. And staff recommends alternative one, which is to deny the appeal and affirm the planning commission's approval of the CEQA determination and special development permit tentative parcel map. And then just an update, since the staff report production, we did receive an email today from the appellant with rebuttal letter to staff's response. We also received another letter from the applicant in support of the project. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. First up is Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Klein. I have a question for the Office of City Attorney. So Mr. Nagel and Rebecca, it's nice to see you here as well. John, this is just a typical Rules of the Road question that I like to ask when up here on the dais we have something other than seven council members. So if I'm counting noses, I see five council members here right now with Councilmember Cisneros recused and Vice Mayor Dean absent. And some potential actions in front of us would be a CEQA thing, a special development permit thing, and a tentative parcel map thing. And the question is, if council is of a mind to move any of those across the finish line, and I have no idea what's going to happen at the public hearing, do we need three yes votes, four yes votes, or how many yes votes are required to get those across the finish line?
In this case, since Councilmember Cisneros is essentially abstaining to participate, she counts towards the quorum, and there's a quorum even without her presence, but she wouldn't count towards a vote. So that would mean for the appeal to be upheld or denied, there would have to be a majority of the council that's hearing the appeal, so that's five. And so it would take three votes for the council to either uphold or to deny the appeal.
Okay. And sometimes, not tonight, but sometimes the answer is four yes votes are required, but that's if like we're doing like an ordinance or something where it's specified in the charter or Rules of the Road that it requires four yes votes regardless of the number of council members on the dais. That's not what's happening here tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct. Generally, it's general plans, specific plans. That's by state law. Introduction of an ordinance and adopting a resolution regarding the expenditure of funds. I think that's all of it. There may be another one that I've forgotten, but that's, none of those are dealing with an appeal.
That's great. City Attorney, thank you very much. And I'll just turn my attention over to Community Development Department. George, that was a great presentation. I don't have any questions for you. We're seeing a lot of you in council chambers these days recently, so another great job and presentation. Nice to see you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much. I have a few questions. How does the shared path interact with the Caltrain station path that we approved last week? Does it interact with the, I'm trying to remember in my mind the layout of that path. Are these going to connect in some way? They simply just complementary? No, they wouldn't be able to connect in some way?
No, they would not connect. They're separate paths. So this path would really be benefiting the residents of this project and then the apartments next door to the west that would provide a more direct path to San Zino Way, which links up with Lawrence Station. But the other path you're referencing is on Sonora Court, and that's just a north-south route that links Sonora to the station.
And my understanding is that path, they were also working with the Savoy on that path?
They might have been, but not necessarily because it doesn't link with the Savoy site.
Okay, cool. Next question. The formaldehyde issue. I saw one of my colleagues asked a question about this, and this is something that's been a little confusing to me as well. Wouldn't this, in theory, apply to just about every construction project in the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. How much did the appellant's pay to file this appeal? May I ask that?
I think our appeal fee is somewhere between $250 to $75, a little less than $300.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sal.
Hi, thank you for the work you've done on this. One of my Monday morning questions was what analysis has been done to determine that this project emissions would not exceed Bay Area Air Quality Management District thresholds? And you pointed me to where it was found, but I was wondering if you could just elaborate more on that analysis for the public.
Yes, thank you, councilmember. For that question, I'd like to defer to one of our consultants that are on the line. Yes, here's Pat Angell with Ascent.
Good evening, council. I believe your question was what to elaborate on the air quality analysis that was done for this specific project, correct?
Correct.
Okay. First, to take a step backwards, the entirety of all of the development that's allowed under the Lawrence Station area plan was evaluated, and its original EIR and its subsequent EIR that was prepared as part of the expansion of residential development intensities in the planned area. So there's kind of an overall cumulative analysis done on the entirety of the planned area. In addition to that, for this project, you'll find in the air quality analysis of the checklist, some air quality modeling was done for this specific project in isolation, asking the question, if you were just to evaluate this project in isolation, would it exceed any of the district's thresholds? And there are two tables in the air quality section that address that item. I'm sorry, I don't, let me...
I think it's, staff told me it was Attachment Five, and it was page 45.
Correct. There are two tables, actually, there's three tables. There's a table three in the checklist itself, which is part of your attachment, is table three, excuse me, 4.3-4, 4.3-5, and 4.3-6, and all address air quality impacts of this project in isolation, as well as cumulatively for both criteria emissions and toxic air contaminant exposure. And identifies, if you looked at this project in just simple isolation, that it does not exceed any of the district's thresholds.
Okay, and that's the normal way in which you evaluate new developments? Is that correct?
Correct. You compare it against the district's thresholds. Even though it was programmatically evaluated in the EIR, we went the extra step and looked at it in just simple isolation.
Okay, thank you. And then we also got a letter from a neighbor in business that was asking about construction and how the neighbors will be able to be informed of the construction. So in your Monday morning responses, you gave many thorough answers to that, but I was wondering if you could just briefly, high-level, give an overview of what this development would do so that the neighbors would be comfortable with what's going to happen.
Yes, so as part of this project's conditions of approval, one of the requirements is to prepare a detailed construction management plan that includes measures to notify neighbors when construction is occurring and when to expect any road closures. There's also a disturbance coordinator that needs to be identified should there be any complaints, so there's someone on site to address those. And also, all construction routes will need to be reviewed by our Public Works Department, and that's part of the construction management plan as well, just to make sure that traffic is flowing in the right direction and avoids residential areas to the extent possible. So those are usually the main measures that we use.
My last question is about traffic impacts. What are your thoughts about traffic impacts when this development is done? What's your thinking about, what analysis will be done or has been done, or thoughts on that?
Yeah, so this project is exempt from traffic studies. It's exempt from VMT, a Vehicle Miles Travel analysis, per the council policy, just given its location to the station. It's also exempt from a local transportation analysis because it has lower trip counts, so it didn't exceed the thresholds for a detailed traffic study. But do want to note that another recent traffic study in this area for the Sonora Court projects, that did account for this project's traffic in that study. And that one required a traffic study because of the office use that generated more vehicle trips.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next is Councilmember Shree Bhavan.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. You answered one of my questions, which was related to formaldehyde. Councilmember Mellinger asked that, that is, it can be appealed, every construction can be appealed because of the construction material. But the question I have is on slide number four. There is a lot line between the existing office buildings and then the new construction, right? And then if we go to the next slide, slide five, sorry, David, there is the office garage entry. How does that work? That is, from Kafer they're coming in, but then is there a passage from Kafer through these office buildings?
Yes, there is. So it's not really shown on this diagram, but Kafer is towards the top or to the north. And there is, there's a couple driveways on Kafer where office users could enter from there. They could also enter from another driveway on San Zino, which is just north of the residential entry. And they can legally access this site through shared access easements that will be done as part, you know, prior to the building permit issuance. We'll work with the applicant's attorney to make sure there's proper access between both sites, should one of those be sold in the future. But yes, and then there's a parking management plan that also looks at the shared parking details, but we've, you know, worked with the applicant beforehand to make sure that there's enough parking to accommodate demand.
Thank you. And then on the right-hand side of this slide, you have residential garage entry. If I remember correctly, you said that third level garage, third level is for residential parking, and then they could still use the first two depending on the timing. Is that correct?
Yes, so, you know, the third is all residential, and on the first and second, the office users will have access to that, and then there are some residence spaces as well. Because when offices are not in use, such as the weekends, you know, there'll be more space for residents to park in those those spaces. And then, um, with with the, uh, the property management, they would have to make sure that residents vacate the spaces, you know, before, you know, Monday morning to make sure that office users can park there as well.
Okay, those are my questions for now. I will wait for public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I had several questions. Um, first, um, I wanted to disclose that I met with the applicant last week to learn more about the project. I also did a site visit over the weekend to just get a better feel for layout and, you know, how things relate to each other. Uh, so, yeah, I had the question about, um, you know, it's like whether or not this appeal, the concept of the interior wood would apply to basically every, you know, every residential, every office space from that standpoint. And, you know, your answer to Councilmember Mellinger was conceivably yes. But you also talked to, you know, in in the response to to our eight AM questions, was that the California Air Resource Board Composite Wood Products Regulations around, and I I didn't know what Phase Two products are, and, you know, can you clarify that for me?
Uh, yes, I'll I'll do my my best here, but, uh, let's see. So, um, so these these are related to like, uh, the the carb regulation. And originally, it was adopted in two thousand and seven and had two phases of emission standards. Uh, so it, you know, phase one passed, now we're in the phase two stage. Um, and that requires all finished goods, such as flooring, destined for sale or used in California, to be made using complying composite wood products. And then those became legal for sale as of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, and then as far as the, you know, as far as reducing the amount of emissions, it's a mixture of ventilation. You know, the 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 standard ventilation that you would have in any residential or office building, and then conceivably the 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 control of formaldehyde within wood that's being sold within California. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And then the current version of the Building Code now requires some more stringent air filtration systems, the MERV thirteen. Um, and that that will, um, help with with, um, the ventilation. And then, uh, when this project comes through building permit stage, I, you know, it it could be another Building Code of that at that time has a more stringent standard, but as of now, you know, there are some better filtration systems required.
Thank you, that's appreciated. And then you said that the appellant had a rebuttal letter that was received today?
Yes.
Was that sent to council and I missed it and I haven't got through all my emails?
Uh, yes, that was sent this afternoon.
Okay, and so can you give, I'm sure we'll hear from the appellant, but can you give a quick summary while I search out my emails?
Um, it's it's essentially a disagreement among experts. Uh, you know, the the appellant is still claiming that the city needs to do an EIR for this project and evaluate formaldehyde even more.
Okay, appreciate it. Uh, and then as far as this project's concerned, part of it is wayf- so one, some of the, some of the, um, wayfinding is for the pathways is some of their points for the Lawrence Station Plan. Can you clarify what wayfinding will look like as far as this project is concerned?
Yeah, so the these are identified in the Lawrence Station Sense of Place Plan. And, uh, probably the most notable is a large gateway sign that's going to be at the the corner that will be clearly visible from from Kaifer Road and and Lawrence. Um, I believe this is about an eighteen-foot-tall pylon sign that has the Sunnyvale logo and it's announcing entry into Lawrence Station. Um, so it's to help users have some some identity about the city and then also find the the Caltrain station better, because that's always been an issue with this particular Caltrain station. Um, so that will be the main sign, and then there's a smaller sign that will be placed along San Zino near the the shared use path that will direct persons from the shared use path to get to the the station. Um, and then also pedestrians on San Zino way to get, you know, you're on the right path to the towards the station.
Okay, that's much appreciated. You know, it's it's trying to figure out how this, the overall Lawrence Station Plan finally takes shape. And we're seeing, you know, multiple projects kind of slowly moving forward since the since the plan was approved. Uh, as far as, and kind of along that route, you know, and I asked this question at Monday Morning Questions, assuming that this is a project, the the appeal is not, is denied tonight, the two hundred and twenty-five units that are that are here, where does that stand for what has been entitled or built for the overall Lawrence Station Plan as it currently stands from a residential standpoint?
Yeah, so, uh, let let me find the numbers real quick, but the the shorter answer is there'll be plenty of units remaining that are allowed within the the plan area. I believe it's, yeah, three, three thousand something. Today, we've we've had about a little less than two thousand units that have been approved or built or under construction. Um, and then overall, there is about five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five units that are allowable within the plan area. So, yes, it's it's three thousand, let me find the number here. Yes, so we have a remaining balance of three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four units, should this be approved tonight.
Okay, much appro- much appreciated, you know, thank you for, and it's looking at, you know, what we've studied from from a plan standpoint and trying to see, you know, as we're slowly building out that plan, making sure that, you know, it's, for one thing, hopefully not immediately approved, but it's it's over a period of time as we, you know, build more housing, residential retail. So so glad to see that that plan is is moving forward. I see no further questions from council. Uh, so let me go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand or dial star nine on your telephone now to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphones when it's their turn to address council. Uh, the appellants will be given ten minutes at the beginning of the public hearing, divided amongst the the appellants who formally appealed the planning commission decision. And following the appellants, the applicant is also provided ten minutes to address city council. Uh, at the end of the public hearing, the applicant will receive an additional five minutes, and the appellants uh, will also receive an additional five minutes following the applicant. First up, is there an appellant presentation?
Good evening. My name is Victoria Yum from the law firm Lazo Jury. I am here this evening on behalf of Appellant Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union Two Seventy, or Lyona, and its members living and working in Sunnyvale. Lyona respectfully requests that the city council grant its appeal and require city staff to prepare either a subsequent MND or an EIR for the project prior to any approvals. As noted at the Planning Commission's public hearing for the project in October, Lyona is not opposed to this project being built, but believes that full CEQA review is required to adequately analyze and mitigate the potential significant impacts to air quality and human health from the project's construction and operation. The city proposes to approve the project based on the two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-one LSAP EIRs. The project, however, has project-specific potentially significant impacts that should be analyzed and mitigated in a new CEQA document, including indoor air quality, cumulative air quality, and health risk impacts. First, the project will likely have new significant indoor air quality impacts that were not analyzed in the two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and twenty-one LSAP EIRs. Lyona's indoor air quality expert, Francis Offerman, concluded that the project's future residents would likely be exposed to formaldehyde from composite wood products used in building materials and furnishings far above CEQA's significant thresholds. According to Mr. Offerman, these composite wood products are commonly found in residences and contain formaldehyde-based glues that off-gas formaldehyde over a very long time period. This is particularly concerning, given that formaldehyde is a known human carcinogenic. After reviewing the project, Mr. Offerman concluded that residents will be exposed to a cancer risk from formaldehyde of a hundred and twenty per million, even assuming that all building materials are compliant with CARB's airborne toxic control measure, which is twelve times higher than the Bay Area AQMD's CEQA's significant threshold for airborne cancer risk of ten per million. This impact was not analyzed in the prior EIRs. Feasible mitigation measures should be imposed for the project, such as requiring no added formaldehyde wood products, among other mitigation measures recommended by Mr. Offerman. Mr. Offerman's expert comments were submitted to the Planning Commission prior to the October public hearing on the project. Lyona also submitted a rebuttal letter to the city council this afternoon that was prepared by Mr. Offerman. The letter responds to several assertions made by the city's environmental consultant in its November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three response to Lyona's appeal. Lyona did not have access to this response until last Thursday. Considering the city's response and critique of Lyona's experts' comments, I want to clarify a few issues. First, with respect to the project's indoor air quality and health health risk impacts from formaldehyde, utilization of CARB's Phase Two Formaldehyde Airborne Toxic Control Measure materials will not ensure acceptable cancer risks with respect to formaldehyde emissions from from composite wood products. Additionally, the December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen EPA rule to reduce exposure to formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products that the city relies on is the same as the CARB Airborne Toxic Control Measure Regulations and does not ensure acceptable cancer risks with respect to formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products. Further, the city's reliance on the American Society of Heating and Air Conditioning Engineers' sixty-two-point-two ventilation and air filtration requirements in the state's Title Twenty-Four Building Code is also misplaced since it does not address formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products nor ensures acceptable cancer risk with respect to formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products. In addition, Mr. Offerman's rebuttal letter explains that even composite wood products manufactured with CARB-certified ultra-low-emitting formaldehyde resins do not ensure that the indoor air will have concentrations of formaldehyde that meet cancer risks that substantially exceed ten per million. Only use of composite wood products made with no added formaldehyde resins can ensure that the cancer risk of ten per million is met. Regarding the city's argument that Mr. Offerman's calculations were based on a false and unrealistic assertion that future residents will likely be exposed to truly continual levels of off-gasped formaldehyde, Proposition Sixty-Five requires utilizing the assumption of a seventy-year lifetime, which covers all occupants, including those that for medical reasons live indoors continuously their entire lives. Lastly, as Mr. Offerman explains in his rebuttal, he is not recommending that the builders speculate on what and how much composite materials be used, but rather at the design stage to select composite wood materials based on the formaldehyde emission rates that manufacturers routinely conduct using the California Department of Health Standard method for the testing and evaluation of VOC emissions for indoor sources using environmental chambers and use the procedure described in Mr. Offerman's comments as the uh, known as the preconstruction building material and furnishing formaldehyde emissions assessment to ensure that the building materials selected for the project achieve acceptable cancer risk for material offgassing of formaldehyde. As such, Mr. Offerman's expert analysis is substantial evidence of a new significant indoor air quality and health risk impact that requires full CEQA review. Additionally, the LSAP EIRs admitted significant and unavoidable impacts on air quality and significant and unavoidable cumulative impacts on air quality and wastewater services. Because these impacts will remain significant and unavoidable, the project requires its own subsequent MND or EIR. Courts have held that this is meant to ensure that the city goes on the record and explains specifically why they are approving the later project despite its significant unavoidable impacts. Given the substantial evidence that the project will result in significant environmental impacts not fully analyzed or mitigated in the prior EIRs, Lyona respectfully requests that the city council require either a subsequent MND or an EIR be prepared for the project. That concludes my comments at this time. Thank you so much for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. I see no questions from council. Uh, let's move on to the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Klein and councilmembers. I'm Jonathan Stone with Prometheus Real Estate Group. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you all for your time. Uh, as stated in our letter to council and staff that we supported or submitted earlier today, um, along with some of the recent outreach, uh, we strongly support the Planning Commission's unanimous approval in the subsequent, uh, staff report that's before you today recommending denial of the appeal. Uh, we very much look forward to delivering this transit-oriented development to bring much-needed housing to the city of Sunnyvale, including twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-five apartments, forty-four of those being affordable, as well as implementing the much-needed bicycle and pedestrian pathway that's been discussed thus far this evening, uh, in line with the policies of the Lawrence Station area plan. Uh, and along with that, believe, um, delivering much needed and distinguished architectural design, which incorporates the retention of the existing mature redwood trees in the neighborhood. Uh, it's been a pleasure for us to work with staff in the city. Uh, the beginnings of our company originated here in nineteen sixty-eight. We look forward to delivering this project and others in the future. Our team is here today, both in person and online, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the applicant? Um, I'll raise a quick question. So so part of, um, the question, some of the rebuttal email that I skimmed through as I was going through, um, as the as the appellant was basically speaking, uh, was raising questions about, uh, the CARB Phase Two Certified Composite Wood Products and the use in in your product, in in the project. And so trying to get a better feel for for your take on, you know, the usage of that. And and they were ultimately suggesting, um, if I can go back, uh, no added formaldehyde resins, so so trying to get a better idea of of the construction components in your in your property and, um, not calling back to the EIR, but trying to see what your vision is for the project.
Sure, so building materials in general, those that make it to the marketplace are highly regulated by state and federal guidelines. We follow those. Those are in line with the California Building Code. So, once we move into, uh, building permit process and plan development, as staff has mentioned, we will follow the guidelines currently in place. So the current California Building Code, um, which is fairly strict in its, uh, call-out of specific materials, currently identifies certain materials of every sort that are going to be used to to build. Uh, and if those change between now and when we submit for the, uh, our application for building permit, we will follow those. Um, so we are in line with, um, everyone in the industry is following, uh, which I think was heard here earlier tonight, that this applies to every project in in the city and every project in the state. And we're merely following those guidelines, which we believe are heavily vetted out and secure the safety of all users ourselves here in this room right now.
Thank you very much. Um, next up is Councilmember Mellinger. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Srinivasan.
Oh, thank you. I know, I just saw this. No, this question is for city attorney. Is the... I know he's reading some other thing.
John?
Yeah, I know, sorry. A very quick question. Do, does city have any liability if we deny the appeal?
Um, oops, excuse me. No, what they're challenging is on CEQA. And as, um, the CEQA consultants had talked to and the, um, the staff report addressed, the impact of building materials on the residents is not a matter for CEQA, it's a matter for, uh, CARB, I believe, and compliance with the state and federal guidelines that they were just discussing. So as long as, uh, they are complying with the building requirements, I don't believe the city would have any liability. Assuming we get sued, which is always a possibility on the CEQA matter, um, the applicant is obligated to indemnify us. Uh, and so that means they will bear all the cost of the litigation, and we would work in conjunction with their attorneys, uh, to defend against any CEQA lawsuit that was filed. And I I believe we would, we would, uh, we would prevail.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Uh, we'll now move on to the public. I have no in-person speaker cards on this item. Uh, oh, sorry. Yes. Um, city clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, first up is Martin P., followed by Matthew E. Martin, you've been in...
Martin, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the City Council.
Good evening. Martin Pine, Chair of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission heard this item on October ninth and we voted unanimously to approve the project and make all of the required findings. The, the project meets the vision requirements associated with the Lawrence Station Plan. It preserves existing trees, includes unbundled parking, has low in commute, it's proximity to transit. But I think what we're really here to talk tonight is about the CEQA findings and the Planning Commission was, was able in its, to exercise its independent judgment and analysis and find that it's consistent with the, with the LSAP, it's consistent with the environmental parameters analyzed in the program SEIR for the reasons specific, for the reasons that were contained in your staff report, that I don't think you need me to go into too much further detail on that. But the Planning Commission was, was able to make all the CEQA findings as well as the SDP findings and the tentative map findings. Now, speaking on my, now speaking solely on my own behalf and not on behalf of the commission as a whole, I would say that I would encourage the project to hire skilled and trained local construction workers. Union labor is great. It would have giving, giving high-paying jobs to local workers is great and it is something that the project should, the project and the applicant should absolutely do. So, I just, I just wanted to put that on the record personally. But again, that's, that's, that is outside the scope of the Planning Commission's decision. The Planning Commission's decision was to make all of the findings and approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for the mayor. Oh, sorry. I would ask that we freeze hands at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next up is Mark E., sorry, Matthew E., followed by Mark S. Matthew, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the City Council.
Awesome, thank you and good evening. I just wanted to say Matthew Estepona with the Associated Building Contractors of Northern California Chapter. We represent building contractors in the trades and we are also training and developing the workforce in Santa Clara County. And just wanted to voice our input to ensure that any new development remains open, free and fair open competition for bidding. Our members have done a lot of great work in Santa Clara County, building government buildings, but also private development. And in particular, we, members would like to see this project to also be free of any type of regulations or any type of prevention from them being able to bid and be firmly believe that competition should be the best for the community. Thank you for your time and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Mark S. Mark, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the City Council. Mark, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. Mark S., we're going to give you one more opportunity. You should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. Mayor, that was the final remote public speaker that raised their hand by the cutoff period and they don't appear to be present.
Okay, thank you. I will bring it back. The, let's see, one second. Okay. The applicant now has five minutes to address City Council. Present any additional information? Is there anything the applicant wants to say?
We thank you again for your time. We really look forward to delivering this much-needed project, this much-needed housing. If any other questions do come up where we are here, but we greatly appreciate the process, the engagement of staff in the city and look forward to continuing our future, our past in the city and to our end of the future here. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much. And the appellants will now have five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Mayor, and honorable council members. I'll be brief in my closing comments. The last point I would like to make is that regardless of following local, state, and federal rules and regulations with regard to formaldehyde emissions, there is still a potential significant indoor air quality and human health risk impact here from indoor emissions of formaldehyde that requires full CEQA review, which would require either an initial, well, would require an initial study followed by either an MND or an EIR. Again, only use of composite wood products made with no added formaldehyde resins can fully ensure that the cancer risk of ten per million is met. Thank you so much and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. I see no questions from council at this point. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mellinger.
Move alternative one.
Councilmember Melton?
Second.
To your motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. First of all, I can make the findings. This project is consistent with the Lawrence Station area plan. As Mr. Schroeder so elegantly pointed out, the grounds of this appeal would apply to virtually every construction project in the city. I find it difficult to believe that that was, that that falls within the intention of CEQA. Beyond that, I will say that this is a good project. It will help to further build out this new neighborhood, building on the projects that we approved last week at Sonora Court. It will help to also make the mid-pen housing projects that are coming down the pipe for this neighborhood a success. It will help to build a vibrant community in the Lawrence Station area plan and in the eastern portion of District Five, which I represent. I am extremely enthusiastic about this project. I think it's a great project. I am excited to see it move forward. I would like to echo Mr. Pine's comments in his personal capacity and encourage the project applicants to utilize a skilled and trained workforce. I think union labor is great. It contributes tremendously to our city and our community. And with that, I will be urging my colleagues' eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Melton?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. Alternative one has two distinct pieces to it. There's the front half that talks about the CEQA piece and there's the back half that talks about the project. The project is awesome. The Planning Commission is awesome. Planning Commission did a great job. The back half of the motion is affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the SDP and this tentative parcel map with the recommended findings. I can make all of the findings in Attachment Three and the recommended conditions of approval in Attachment Four to the report, and I'm fine with all of that for the reasons that my colleague Councilmember Mellinger eloquently stated. I'm going to take the liberty of just reading into the record the front half of the motion because I think it's important. You never know who's going to be watching the video here or when they'll be watching it. The front half of the motion verbatim says, "Deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the CEQA determination that the project is consistent with the twenty-sixteen Lawrence Station Area Plan EIR and the twenty-twenty-one Lawrence Station Area Plan Update Intuitive Surgical Corporate Campus Project Subsequent EIR and no environmental review is required pursuant to CEQA Section one-five-one-six-two and one-five-one-six-eight C two." And things that lead me to the conclusion that that's the correct course of action are outlined in Attachment fourteen, which is a four-page document from our consultants at Ascent, which I think is a very good and helpful summary analyzing appellate's case and providing a response there, too. Some of the sections of this letter that I found particularly compelling on page one, disagreement amongst experts is not a sufficient reason to require an environmental document to be updated and recirculated pursuant to state CEQA guideline Section one-five-one-five-one. That's a fact. The city is properly allowed to reject the opinions and beliefs of commenters' experts and instead rely on its experts and their expert opinions and analysis regarding the project and its environmental impacts. That's a fact and that's what we're doing here. I find myself next on page three of consultants' memo that point out to some of the weaknesses in appellate's experts' argument. I'll just read a couple of the sentences here. Says, "In addition, the twenty-twenty study cited by appellate's expert required participants to keep their windows closed for the duration of the study one week and rely solely on mechanical ventilation. In reality, residents would open their windows and use their patios for hours at a time during spring, summer, and fall. This ventilation would greatly reduce formaldehyde concentrations in indoor air and thus the studies do not accurately capture real-world scenarios." It goes on to say, "The consultant's expert also asserts that it is foreseeable that residential occupants will have continuous exposure, e.g., twenty-four hours per day, fifty-two weeks per year. However, this is an unrealistic assumption as most individuals leave their homes to run errands, visit family, friends, and acquaintances, take vacations, travel to work, among many other reasons. Therefore, the assertion that future residents will likely be exposed to truly continual levels of off-gassed formaldehyde is not a true or realistic condition." I agree with that. Second, appellate's consultant expert claimed that the project result would result in significant impacts is based on speculation and associated assumptions regarding project construction and materials, regarding the health risk modeling of formaldehyde, regarding how much ventilation there would be in a project residential units, and regarding application of a significant threshold that is not formaldehyde-specific. I agree with that. We get to the final pieces here where our expert assures council, "A project would only need to evaluate the environment's impact on a project if the project itself would exacerbate an existing adverse condition." The checklist found that there would be no new substantial information indicating that an impact would be more severe than discussed in the LSAP EIR and the LSAP Update EIR and that the conclusions of the LSAP EIR and the LSAP Project Update EIR regarding air quality impacts would remain valid." So, that was a couple of sentences from our expert, all of which I agree with and lead me to the clear conclusion that the appropriate course of action is to deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the CEQA determination. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Srinivasan.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting the motion that is denying the appeal. First of all, it's a very good project. As I see there are, apart from the housing stock, there are forty-four affordable housing will be built, of which eight are very low-income, which is what we require in the city. And then more importantly, from what I understand, the material used conform to the state and federal standards. So, city cannot impose additional controls or regulations on these materials. So, I don't see any issue and then based on the recommendation or advice of our, our city attorney, I don't see any issue with the appeal at all. I would also urge, as Councilmember Mellinger said, the project, if the applicant can use the union local workers, that would help the economy. For all these reasons, first of all, it's a great project. Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing it to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Sal.
I think this project is good because it's transit-oriented development and transit-oriented development helps more affordability, so people don't necessarily have to drive a car to, to live and work. It appears that both the city and the developer has done a lot of research and a lot of thought and followed the law and our city attorney supports this going forward. So, given all that, I would support this. And then as my colleagues had mentioned, I do also support union workers who are well-trained and they can keep a project on schedule and with high workmanship. So, I hope you might consider that, too.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll be supporting this motion. I first want to thank the applicants and I appreciate what the appellant is asking for here, you know, trying to look at the, the overall safety of the residents of this project. But I do, you know, think that the applicant is looking out for the future residents as much as possible here. You know, I do encourage them to choose, you know, low formaldehyde, selection of all their materials, you know, and, and as, you know, our planning commissioner said, you know, doing local hire is always, you know, preferable, especially from a city standpoint. And I just want to thank the Planning Commission for, for seeing this project and, you know, we often don't have a chance to see a lot of projects that are falling within the zoning of, of our city and that's one of the reasons, you know, we depend upon our planning commissioners quite a bit. But I do think that this is a good project overall, looking at how the Lawrence Station Plan is actually slowly being integrated and implemented, I think is, is a positive, you know, positive thing for the city in order to add more housing and, and ultimately look at, you know, that vision, that long-term vision that we created for Lawrence Station. You know, I do understand and, you know, from a city standpoint, I appreciate, as Councilmember Melton said, Attachment fourteen, you know, that, that's what I focused on, specifically looking at, you know, the experts and, you know, the, the reason for what our environmental documents are for. You know, if, as staff said previously, if, if we approved this appeal, conceivably every project that we, that we would encounter would again open up the, the multiple specific plans that we have around the city. And it's like, and whether or not, looking at the internal emissions for every project to me is not what the, the call for CEQA really is, you know, ultimately looking at, you know, trying to figure out the offgassing of, of all wood. And I, you know, I can point to multiple projects that have been approved, you know, over the last ten years that, that, you know, this is why we rely upon the federal and state governments to set, set the appropriate standards. And if the appellant is, you know, thinks that these laws should be raised higher, I, I definitely encourage them to, to talk to our, you know, state legislator on what is a meaning, what, what are meaningful thresholds for, for, you know, offgassing of formaldehyde and what makes sense from a residential standpoint and an office standpoint. But as far as the information that we have here, you know, we rely upon the expertise of our city attorney and the experts that they bring in to evaluate, you know, each project. And, you know, we heard both from the applicant and the appellant here, in weighing the, the matter and weighing the expert opinions. For me, you know, that, that I fell on the side of what the city attorney and, and staff is suggesting, and so will be supporting this motion. And with that, City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
First up, Councilmember Melton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Srinivasan?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero with Councilmember Cisneros recused and Vice Mayor Dean absent.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess, six-minute recess and come back at ten-thirty. Thank you. Let's go ahead and reconvene, and we'll move on to council member reports on activities from intergovernmental committee assignments. Are there any? So, I mentioned this earlier tonight, but it was one of the things that, after we didn't get to IGRs or non-agenda items for several meetings last month, it slipped my mind that in October I was made chair of the Recycling and Waste Commission for the county, and ultimately, and it's like I've been part of that commission for a few years now, and it's good to see, you know, our, one of our old staffers, who's very active in that, from a state standpoint, as well as that commission standpoint, and happy to chair that, and, you know, looking at how we can reduce waste from a county-wide standpoint. I see no other, oh, council member Mellinger.
Wait, we are not yet, we're not yet on non-agenda items. I'm sorry. Never mind.
Okay. We will now move to non-agenda items and comments. Council member Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose a study issue. David, could we get the text of that on the screen, please? Okay. So, I would like to, and could we scroll down just a bit? I would like to propose, as a study issue, a review of our building and planning appeals fees. In August 2023, we heard an appeal of a proposed condo project on Crescent that had been approved by Planning Commission in May. That appeal cost $290 to file, and the developer stated that it led to them carrying an additional $150,000 in costs. We heard another appeal this evening, which Mr. Schroeder stated cost between $250 and $275, and again, was denied on the merits. It is important that stakeholders be able to appeal land use decisions. Sometimes it is the project applicant filing the appeal. Sometimes it is neighbors. Sometimes it is other interested stakeholders. Appeals can cover a wide range of issues. At the same time, such appeals impose costs on the city and can also impose substantial costs on developers. Economic development and supporting our business community is an important priority for the city. And this is especially important, in my opinion, given reexamining these fees is especially important, given recent state efforts to remove local barriers to housing construction, especially on objectively compliant projects. So, oh, could you give the full, there we go. Oh, no, no, down, down. Just show the bullet points. Perfect. Yes. So, streamlining appeal hearing timelines, requiring potential appellants to meet with staff before filing an appeal, increasing appeals fees to discourage frivolous appeals and better cover staff costs. We could require one or two council members to approve an appeal before it could be heard by council. We could grant staff to, the authority to deny appeals that they find would likely violate state law. We could hear other proposals suggested by staff, council, and community stakeholders. As part of this study issue, staff would be asked to seek input from neighborhood associations and local civil society organizations, and hold study sessions with the planning commission and council.
Thank you. Are there cosponsors? Council member Cisneros? And actually, we, go ahead, you can do a short comment if you want, or cosponsoring. Council member Cisneros?
I'm just gonna say cosponsor. No comments.
Council member Sal?
Co-sponsor. We have a housing crisis, so it's good to study items like this.
Thank you. Council member Melton?
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney. It's not any concern of mine what sort of consultancy you provided the maker of the motion or the author of the study issue, but, you know, I can only speak candidly, city attorney. Some of these items have sort of alarm bells going off in my head, and, you know, the thought of one or two council members having preemptive right to deny an appeal or influence. Let me just state my piece, council member Mellinger. I believe I have the floor. I'm just expressing, I'm not going to cosponsor the study issue, and I'm seeing some real jurisprudence-type things, and I'm not trying to short-circuit anything. It already has a cosponsor, so it's gonna move forward. I'm just wondering if you had a chance to consult with council member Mellinger, or if you have any thoughts about any of the things I'm expressing.
No, we didn't have a chance to consult with him, and it would be difficult to answer all the questions, but that's what the study issue process would flesh out for the council.
I just want to be perfectly here. I'm not here to pick a fight. I'm not here to derail anything. I respect the process. Study issue has been made. It's been cosponsored twice, so there's nothing I can do to alter the course of where this is going. I'm just expressing, I'm seeing some alarm bells here, and I felt like I wanted to say that out loud, so thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate it.
Through the mayor, I'd like to correct the record on one point. This would be requiring counsel, at one or two council members to approve an appeal before it could be heard, not authorizing one or two council members to deny one. So, this was deliberately intended to parallel the process for calling up an item from the Planning Commission. I would be happy to strike that bullet point if it would make my colleagues more comfortable with this study issue.
I would be happier not to see that.
Let's strike it. Let's strike that one.
City, oh, through the mayor. Can city clerk, can you re-display the bullet points, please? I appreciate the maker of the motion with his flexibility, and maybe if we could slow things down here a little bit. I think there was one more. Granting staff the authority to deny appeals that they would find likely violate state law. I just want to say out loud, since my microphone is on, I totally get the spirit of where this bullet point is coming from, right? If likely violates state law, the thing's gonna be dead on arrival, but I'm not sure how comfortable I am granting staff an authority. You know, if the Planning Commission says, "Do something," or "Don't do something," the next step in the process is city council, not staff, and that's kind of got some alarm bells going. I'm not saying to strike it. I should probably just turn off my microphone, since, you know, things are going in a, on a course here, they're on a track, but, again, I just appreciate the opportunity to turn on my microphone and express some thoughts. Thank you.
I actually, on reflection, think it would be better off without that. I'm gonna strike, ask that that be struck as well. You know, I prefer more, you know, I'm thinking about this, I think that that broadens the scope of the study issue over much, and I'm happy to drop those two bullet points.
Thank you.
And I thank council member Melton for his comments on this.
Thank you. Council member Srinivasan?
Yeah, after those two bullet items, the two council member appealing, approving the appeal was the question I had. But anyway, now I cosponsor this study issue.
Thank you. Council member Cisneros?
Yeah, thank you, and I suppose I will just say a really quick comment on why I decided to jump in and cosponsor it, and certainly not because I looked at that list and said, "Yes, I wish that this would all become city policy tomorrow, and that is what I want to sign off on," right? I looked at that, and I was like, "Yeah, I think there could very well be some legal, you know, complications around some of those things." But there are many cities who have different guardrails, maybe more extensive, an appeals process that's different, that avoids frivolity while also making room for free expression and giving public the opportunity to redress those grievances to us, and finding that middle ground is what the study issue is about, and I think that is a worthwhile conversation to have. But I can't imagine that our city attorney, our city manager, or ourselves would allow us to go ahead and do that, and certainly our residents would not allow us to go ahead and overstep in that way, but I think having, and I appreciated the part of the study issue that really called out doing that outreach to civil society, doing that outreach to neighborhood associations, and making sure that there's a robust stakeholder process, because that's what this would need, because this is about stakeholders fundamentally. So, because that was in there, I was like, "Okay, I feel confident, and it's a conversation worth having, and perhaps we will do nothing," but it's a conversation worth having. That's why I cosponsored it. But I just wanted to say, it's not as if I didn't share those concerns or trepidations, but them taking out or leaving in, it's all fine, because at the end of the day, if something's just patently, like, that's not gonna work, like, staff's not gonna spend a ton of time on it. So, thanks.
Thank you. And I will cosponsor this. I had issues with those pull-up points and wasn't going to cosponsor. Having staff decide that they, that the appeal wouldn't go through is exactly why we have appeals, so, you know, it's making sure that people feel heard, and of course, having council members being a different threshold, you know, as far from a process standpoint, doesn't make sense. I will raise questions with the fee cost. We don't want to, I want to make sure that this isn't based upon only those rich developers or rich or well-funded labor unions decide that they will, that they are the only ones who can appeal, and making sure that that barrier to raise often reasonable issues isn't too high, and, you know, from a fee standpoint, I leave that up to staff. But I do think that, you know, a reasonable fee, and I understand it creates staff time and it slows down projects, has value. But I do think that, that, you know, a reasonable fee, and I understand it creates staff time and it slows down projects, has value, so. But I will cosponsor from, from a study issue standpoint, makes sense. Anything else, Councilmember Mellinger?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so, study issue process is generally a fairly loose process, but one thing that is clear is that there is a study issue stated, and then there, if there's a cosponsor, it becomes a study issue. We've never had one in the time I've been here in which we had a cosponsor and then the parameters of the study issue changed. So I think it would probably be a good practice to follow Sturgis and treat it as a friendly amendment, and to see whether or not the two council members who had cosponsored it with the original terms would still continue to cosponsor it with the deleted terms, just to make sure that everybody's expectations are the same, and when the staff brings forth the study issue, we don't, we don't have misunderstandings.
Much, much appreciated, so, we're fine as far as this process tonight is concerned, but you're saying for future note, make these friendly amendments, or do you want to formalize this study issue now?
I, I, I think if, because you cosponsored it after, and Councilmember Sal and Cisneros cosponsored it as proposed, so if they're okay with dropping it, then I, I think that would be sufficient. If they have issues, then I think we're, under our rules, we would be stuck with the full parameters, and of course, the issues that were discussed could be raised by the city manager or staff about presenting the issue to council.
Absolutely, and before we leave you, John, at our study, at our study workshop, we could, study issue workshop, we could conceivably change the parameters at that point also.
That, that has happened.
So the write-up, so, and we have done, changed, you know, either scope or remove items in order to reduce, you know, reduce cost, or something of that nature, cost or time.
Yes, that could happen, but that would mean that the original motion would stay, and then the council as a body could change it later, that, that could happen. So that's why, I suggest that maybe see if anyone changes their mind.
Thank you, so, Councilmember Cisneros, are you fine with the removal of those two bullet items?
Yeah, I give a thumbs up, but I realize that that's not parliamentary procedure, so yes.
Thank you, and Councilmember Sal?
Yeah, I support those amendments.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, city attorney. Next up?
I don't know, I think that's better.
Is Councilmember Melton?
So, thank you, city attorney, for that discussion, I really appreciate it. Before the meeting got off the launchpad tonight, I know the city clerk was working very hard to get through some technology issues, and one thing I whispered to Mayor Klein is that one of my IGRs, city attorney at Santa Clara LAFCO, we have a whole paragraph that talks about technology problems, and I would just encourage Mayor Klein, or you, or whoever, right? If, if it's okay to insert a paragraph that says, hey, we're gonna do our best, but if the technology conks out, we're still going to proceed. I think that could be a beneficial thing for the city of Sunnyvale, I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
I, I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I think rather than reading something in like in a statement, it would be good to have one of the council policies tweaked, to talk about the way we did with the television, and whether, I, I think it would make it clearer. I think, as I said earlier, we're not, we weren't obligated to have hybrid when we have technology problems, unless it's a remote participation under the Brown Act, but we could articulate it for sure either in a script, or at some point, I think it would be good to memorialize it in a policy, but we could do it in the script.
I, I would say beyond that, it's, it would be part of the agenda, as opposed to, as opposed to policy, because when people are looking at the agenda and trying to connect up, and, you know, it's like, oh, they wouldn't think of looking at city policy or council policy, so, you know, I think that's, you know, a word or two in the script, or in the, in the actual agenda makes a lot more sense.
I'll carry, I'll carry on if I may, yeah, if, John, if you wanted to pull up tomorrow's LAFCO agenda from the website, it's just a paragraph that's bolted right into the agenda, says if the technology conks out, we're plowing ahead, and, you know, we're sorry, but we're gonna keep going. Hey, and I wish I had had a chance to toss some kudos to our Public Works Director, Chip Taylor, when he was visiting here earlier tonight, but I didn't wanna let the moment pass. Without acknowledging, we got one of our study issues that was launched like back in 2019 or 2020 across the finish line, and that was the E-Rove project. So congratulations to the Public Works Department and the entire city of Sunnyvale. For folks who are familiar or not familiar with the concept of an E-Rove, it's a symbolic enclosure that surrounds a Jewish community, and allows folks observing the Sabbath to carry things, such as house keys, tissues, medication, or babies with them, and use strollers and canes, all of which are otherwise forbidden during the Sabbath from being carried outside one's home. So my recollection, it was Councilmember Hendricks who originally brought up the study issue, and it passed through our normal process. Maybe took a couple of years to get across the finish line, and what happens is you find a connecting pieces of road, or streams, or trails, or sound walls, and if there are any gaps, then our folks in Public Works string from some fishing wire to finish the symbolic enclosure, and you string it from high point A to high point B. Anyway, I saw in the city manager's report a couple of issues ago that that was put across the finish line, and just felt like I wanted to say kudos to Public Works for getting that done, and another example of the Sunnyvale Way embodied in the study issue process and getting things done, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton, and thanks to city staff for that, but it was, I think, what's taken so long. Staff, staff was finished up this, I think, two years ago now, three years ago, and it's taken a lot of work in the back, trying to get all the other jurisdictions to agree with what city, what, with the city of Sunnyvale was able to do and approved quite a long time ago. Next up is Councilmember Cisneros?
Yes, thank you, mayor, and in light of my absence from our last council meeting, I just wanted to briefly take this opportunity tonight to join my colleagues in providing just a brief statement regarding the groundswell of discussion and discourse regarding the ongoing suffering after the Hamas attack on Israel on October 7th, especially as being one of the four council members who signed Assemblymember Lowe's open letter expressing concern and support for the children of Gaza in these unspeakably dark times. I also have had the opportunity to speak with many members of our community who are deeply affected by both the attacks on October 7th, and the terror that now transcends borders, and has found a home in this city and in all cities. In these conversations, if I have had one big takeaway, it's that there is very little interest in hearing me attempt to analyze foreign policy, and I will honor the requests that I not do that, especially tonight. Gratefully, it's not my job to do that, and, and every day I'm thinking more and more, wow, I'm really glad that that's not my job, because it's incredibly hard and complicated to navigate waters that are so filled with history and trauma, especially, and immediate hurt, this isn't just in the past, it's in the present, and it's in the future, and it's something that, you know, I think, I'd really like to work on a garbage contract. But as a, as a council member, when things transcend borders and it becomes an issue of public safety, both real and the feeling that you have when you're in your identity, in your home, in your school, in your community, then that becomes something that's part of my job to be there and hear members of the community and what they're going through, and figure out, how can I help? Because at the end of the day, that's my job, is to help people have a good experience in the world they live in out there today. So that, I just wanna clarify, I'm not gonna analyze public foreign policy, nobody wants it, and I don't want to either, so we're in agreement, but it's my job to consider the safety of those in the community, so that's what I will seek to do now. So, I want to say unequivocally, and get it out there, that I condemn the terrorist attacks carried out by Hamas against Israel, full stop. There is nothing in this world that could possibly justify or rationalize this kind of reprehensible violence, in that instance, in any other instance, against anyone, anywhere. It's never something that can be acceptable to anyone in this world. And I condemn antisemitism and threats of violence against Jewish people, both here in Sunnyvale, in the United States, and anywhere in the world at all times. I condemn the words and actions of those who wish to instill fear and harm in the community, in the Jewish community here in Sunnyvale, at all times, and I am very grateful, especially to my Jewish neighbors who have reached out and shared these deep feelings of pain, and, and really personal stories of how this is affecting them, because that's trust. I was entrusted to hear these moment, these very dark moments, and for that, I'm very grateful. It has, it's been very difficult, but that, what I'm experiencing is just one piece of what people are experiencing because of their identities in our community every day, and I take that very seriously. And it, in a lot of ways, it's a gift to be able to experience connection with the people around you in that, in that way, but it's also really hard, because when, at the end of the day, when you're an elected official, you're also a person who has values and opinions and feelings, but when you're an elected official, you're also a public figure, so that also means everyone gets to like criticize you in public for it, right? But that's okay, and I accept that wholeheartedly, and so, you know, I signed the Assemblymember's letter because I grieve most deeply for the children who are literally caught in the crossfire of any war, and they're in the crossfire not because of any identity, or religion, or ideology, but just because of an accident of birth, that could have been you, could have been me, it's just the way it happened. And peace has been stolen from them, and in many cases, so have their lives, and so, I felt that letter reflected the grief and the empathy, just as a mom, and as a person, that, that I feel with anyone who's experiencing that kind of loss of, of children, just anywhere in the world. And so, I'm incredibly fortunate to not know what that feels like for myself, and so, I just wanted to affirm that that is not something that I'm okay with happening in this world, but the intention of signing that statement, I've not personally posted about social media, engaged in any significant discussion about that on a personal capacity, but signing that, the impact was that there were people who felt really uncomfortable or hurt, or that, you know, does this mean that Alyssa, you know, feels less for Israeli children? I'm just here to say like that, that's not true, and that same grief, and like deep place of just human connection and empathy, and, you know, just incomprehensible disgust for what's happening, I feel that for Israeli children too, and those hostages need to be freed, and ultimately, everyone needs to have an opportunity to grow up in a peaceful world, and that has been taken from so many people, and I do not wish to be ever part of that. And in Sunnyvale, to the extent that I can help make people feel safe, I am here to do that, and I invite you to please come and tell me how I can help you feel safe. Unfortunately, I cannot, you know, go ahead and stop anything, or have a measurable impact on what's happening there, but to the extent I can have a measurable impact on what's happening in your life in Sunnyvale, please don't be afraid to reach out, so. Thank you for hearing that, and hopefully, this is something that we are able to grow in greater empathy and connection from in a very dark time, but that's all we can really hope for, so, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, council member, and Councilmember Sal?
So, can I comment on the two residents who came and spoke about the statement of unity and peace? In the face of fear, both of them, Islamophobia, antisemitism, that they took a constructive approach, and they developed that statement, which talks about coming together, freedom of religion, unity and peace, opposing antisemitism, opposing Islamophobia. So I was just wondering if we as a council could do anything with that statement?
Thank you. I see no other comments from council? So we will move back to, oh, sorry, city attorney, city manager, do you have any non agenda items or comments?
One brief announcement, mayor, I just wanted to give you a brief update. Tremendous progress continues on the Civic Center project, doing the site work around City Hall. Today was a huge milestone, we took down the fences on Olive Avenue that separate City Hall from several acres of passive open space, and those are now open for public use, so, exciting to see that happen, and there's a lot of progress as well on the south side of City Hall as that work continues, that's it.
Thank you, congratulations. We'll now move back to remote oral communications. I'll ask people that, if you want to speak, please raise your hand now, and we will freeze the numbers of speakers with their hands raised at the end of the first speaker. And with that, city clerk, can you call on our remote speakers for oral communications?
Yes, mayor, first up is Rudy H., followed by June A. Rudy, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Fantastic, my name is Rudy Hess, thank you so much for taking my call, and I would like to say that I am in complete disagreement with the last council member who missed the last meeting. Israel itself is a terrorist state, and has been since 1947, when it took over the homes of everyone that used to live in that region, what was known as Palestine. Israel was not even a word on the map in the Encyclopedia Britannica, pre-1956. So they went and they stole this land, they kicked the indigenous population out of this land, and they started killing, raping, and maiming every man, woman, child, and so.
Can you, can you go to subject jurisdiction of, of this council?
Yeah, fuck niggers.
Thank you, thank you, city clerk.
That was perfect.
Next up is.
Mayor, Mayor Klein is a, as a point of order, I'm just looking at the freeze point.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, mayor.
Next up is Rudy H., followed by.
No, we just, Rudy H. was.
I'm sorry, yes, sorry, next up is June A., followed by someone calling in with a phone number ending in 117. June, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address city council. June, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. Okay, it looks like June is attempting to connect audio, so why don't we go to the next speaker, and then come back to June. Next up, member of the public calling in with a phone number ending in 117, followed by Ursula. The member of the person calling in with a phone number ending in 117, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council. The individual calling in with the phone number ending in 117, please dial star six to unmute your phone, and you'll be able to address city council. Mayor, they don't appear to be responding to being unmuted, so we will move on to. Or Ursula, followed by, we'll check in with June. Ursula, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Fantastic, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you so much, um, my goodness, I had a whole thought prepared, and then listening to some of the, the comments, I'd, I'd actually like to talk on something separately. I actually wanted to thank the city attorney for protecting free speech, I understand there are limits, I, I get it, and I do appreciate him pointing out the difference between hate speech and, and simply speaking on a topic that you may not like. I mean, time and time again, Supreme Court justices have ruled in favor of free speech, even while talking about quote-unquote hate speech. Oliver Wendell, actually, during State versus Swimmer, he stated if there was any principle of the Constitution that more imperatively calls. of the Constitution that more imperatively calls for attachment than any other, is a principle of free thought. Not free thought for those who agree with us, but freedom for the thought that we hate." I find this interesting, because recently, I've been reading, actually about the rise in antisemitism, specifically at kind of bombarding city councils. So I was flabbergasted to actually go into my local city council and witness it. But when I was growing up, I always heard that it was ignorance that spread hatred, that those words only came out of the ill-informed. And one of the speakers today actually mentioned a website, I think it was like GTVflyers.com. I actually looked it up earlier when they originally spoke. And, I'm sorry, you know, when I was in college, I majored in psychology, and I actually volunteered at this counseling group, and we did a, a group session specifically for anger management. Most of the people that get anger management court-mandated and go to these groups are there for some sort of hate crime. And we found, on the psychological standpoint, the best way to combat hate is actually to have an open dialogue. So I understand you having to shut people down when they use slurs or profanity. However, I think the best way to combat all of this hatred is really just to have an open dialogue. I mean, if information on the site is false, then the best thing we can do is just prove it. And then, and then the conversation ends instead of shutting people down. Because once someone doesn't feel heard, they react in vulgar ways, or maybe even actually take some sort of action, which I find is a very dangerous thing for any government body to do. When it comes right down to it, we do live in America, we do have rights, and it feels rather communist to censor people. But I wanted to thank you for letting me speak. You guys have a phenomenal night.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna return to June. June, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. Looks like June is still experiencing tactical difficulties trying to connect to audio. That is the last remote public oral communication speaker.
Okay. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, city attorney, for your help tonight. This meeting is adjourned at 11:07 PM. Thanks for everyone who participated. Have a good evening.